Yeah, does ours intervene?
Well, it's not yet. That's the... That's too...
That's exactly what I could...
Good evening, everyone. It's 6:30 on the 20th of August 2019, and we'll begin our city council meeting as we do all of our city council meetings with the pledge of allegiance. Would you please join us? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ask the city clerk to do roll call.
Harrington.
Here.
McKinney, absent. O'Doherty.
Here.
Pierce.
Here.
Schuster.
Here.
Stalder.
Here.
Weaver, absent. Gabriel.
Here.
Shumway.
Here.
That's seven present and two absent, Your Honor.
Thank you. So, we have a quorum. Now, I'll ask our vice mayor if he would take us through the considerations, the changes in the agenda and setting the agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. I would move that the following changes to the agenda be approved. First, add A.J.'s scheduled meetings to consent agenda with meeting August 28th of 2019, 7:00 p.m. It's a joint meeting with the Albany County Commissioners for a presentation from Connect Chin at the Commissioner's Chamber. Also add an executive session tonight regarding land negotiations, Wyoming statute 164405. On the regular agenda tonight, moving item 16, the FAA grant agreement, to 11A on the regular agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by Councilor O'Doherty. All in favor of those changes, would you indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Vice Mayor.
This would be a motion that the agenda be set as changed.
Second.
Then seconded by Councilor Schuster for the consent agenda to be set. All in favor of that, indicate by saying aye.
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 Okay. The next item we have is we're going to be doing... There are no proclamations tonight, but there are two public hearings. And as we go into these public hearings, I'll have the city clerk read the notice of this, but I want to just ask those of you that are here know, you're going to have two opportunities to speak on these topics. This is to do with the Boba Link, the annexation, and also the zoning. You can choose to speak at both, or you can save your comments for when it comes up on the regular agenda. You'll have ample opportunity to speak. And obviously, we'll... You're here for... A lot of you are here for that, so we'll be here to listen and consider all of that. So, at this time, we'll have our city clerk read the notice of the first public hearing.
Notice is hereby given that the city council will meet at 6:30 p.m. on August 20th, 2019, in Council Chambers, Laramie City Hall, 406 Iverson Avenue, Laramie, Wyoming, to take public comments on the following. Original ordinance number 2002, annexing approximately six acres of property located in unincorporated Albany County, located at 4503 Boba Link Lane into the boundaries of the city of Laramie, Wyoming. All applications, plans, and specifications relative to these matters are available for review at the City of Laramie Planning Office at 405 Grand Avenue, Laramie, Wyoming. Anyone wishing to be heard should be present or may be represented by his or her agent at the meeting.
Thank you. So, at this time, those of you that want to speak on this item, which are going to be covered by... I think that the next two public hearings are going to be correlating with 14 and 15 on the agenda. But you're welcome to come forward and speak now. Anyone that would like to speak on this item on the public hearing, would you please come forward? Either for or against.
It's the annexation.
Yeah, the annexation. And as you do, thank you for coming. And as you do, just give us your name, and then there's a sheet there to sign so we can keep that for the record. Welcome back. Thank you.
Well, I've tried to round up as many as I could. Some people weren't able to make it tonight. I want to reiterate what... Part of what I said last week.
Excuse me, just a second. Our city clerk has something.
If you could just state your name for the record.
Oh, Wanda McGuire Garcia.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I've been at my present address on Mockingbird for 19 years. When we bought this land, it was an acre. We were allowed one division, so a half an acre was the minimum that we could sell. Now, I don't know... The house with the six acres, I think, was there when we came, so they must have signed the same covenants. And we don't think they have very much honor when they don't honor the covenants that we were... Was there when we came. I also want to say there were 64 houses on four or five acres. That's 13 to 16 houses per acre. So, and only 35 and a half feet wide. If you have a twin house in 35 and a half feet, if you have... Only have the front part of it, which is what it looks like from the map, you're going to... If you have three houses, you can't park three houses... You can't park six houses in 35 and a half feet. Then, the other thing is, where we are now, we have a lot of dirt roads. And if you have 108 or 172 people coming out of... Onto Boba Link, Fairview comes right on it. That goes right past my property. That road, Fairview's in good shape. Boba Link's got great big holes all over the place. How are you going to get 108 cars or 172 cars out of there twice a day? There's... I don't know... Right now, it's dangerous. A lot of places walk in the dogs because there's no... There's no other... We've got all those people across the road. They did us a big favor by having all of the single homes with nice yards facing ours, so that helped the value of our house. But with all of these and all of those people coming in and out, I can't even imagine the traffic it would be. And it will be like West Laramie where they will... Well, they'll get annexed in, but they'll have dirt roads. They're... I mean, they aren't going to be safe. Your vehicles are going to be tore apart, let alone if you annex us and we end up having to pay 37 and a half thousand just to get water and sewer. We've already paid for a well. We've paid for a sewer. I've got a big garden, not near as good as I used to have. But if you have to pay for city water, it's not even feasible. It's not worth it. I don't want city water. I... I... I don't think that we should have to have it. The other thing is the safety of the thing. If we have that many cars on that road, we're going to have a lot of accidents and just a lot of people in general there. It's... Why don't they put the ones that are hooked together down there where the apartments are? Why do they put it there? And why not just keep separate, single home... Single homes with their own yard around them so they've got plenty of space? So... And if they want to put the business, put them out there by Grand, so we don't have all of that traffic on those little roads. They're just not made for that. And we know from... We've lived in there so long, how bad it is when you have a lot of people there. When they were building Vista Drive and they used ours and stuff, the roads just all fell apart. We had to fill in the holes after they left. Let's see. I can't remember what else I was going to say, but please don't... Please don't do this to us. It's just unmerciful.
Did you need her signature?
She's already signed it. Yeah, thank you.
Is there others that would like to speak on this item?
Are we supposed to be just speaking on annexation?
Right now, yes. And then, we'll talk about zoning in a second. Welcome. Good to see you.
Bob Buckard. Did my wife sign us both up there? No, my wife signed Kathy's. I'm with her.
All right. Welcome, Bob.
Hi. Well, with this annexation, how many of the city ordinances are going to be enforced to actually make all of this part of the city? Are you going to have curb and gutter and streetlights and snow removal by the city? Is this all going to be paved roads and parking space and a half for each individual unit, just like anybody else that's building units in the city? Are we talking all city ordinances are going to be strictly enforced when they build this?
Bob, let me just say this. This is a chance for you to give us your comments. We're not at the final plat yet, but what we want you to know is that we're trying right now to just get through to, you know, the comments that come from the public. It won't be a question and answer. That's not the way the public hearing works.
Oh, well, since it's the first one I've been to, this is important for you to tell me.
What we're doing, though, is we're going to be taking notes on everything that everyone says, and we're going to be, you know, we're going to be getting back to this group because, you know, obviously, we... This isn't the only chance we have to do this. Now, when we go into the... Into the item itself, that's a chance for you to ask questions.
Okay.
Okay? But this is public hearing, which is a little bit different.
Okay. Well, good to know.
All right.
Um... Has there been a lot of in... Has there been input as far as the Casper Opera for protection that this is going to affect? I mean, there's a lot of considerations. And since I seem to be asking questions at the wrong time, I will...
You're welcome to come back.
Relinquish the sand to anybody else that wants to speak about it, too.
Good questions, though. Thank you, Bob. Is there others that would like to make public comment?
My name is Kathy Buckard.
Yes, welcome.
Thank you. I don't know if many of you have been out in that area, around Boba Link and around Mockingbird. And when you go down those roads, you're lucky if you don't get bounced and jostled, and it's miserable. And I find that... I've heard that what is supposed to happen here is they're supposed to put in, like, rocks on the road and not make a real road. We tried that on Mockingbird, and it wasn't long, and all those rocks sunk, and all we had was ruts again. We've tried and tried and tried. Without pavement, it isn't going to work. It seems to me that if this is going to be annexed, it ought to be annexed properly, like Bob was just talking about, putting in roads and sidewalks and things like that. I'm not really in favor of annexing. I'd like to keep the community. It's a community there. If you take a look at the plaque that's on there, you see a bunch of houses just below that thing that have about an acre each. We're allowed to split at once and have another house on there, but it's a half an acre, not putting 30... Let's say 36 or 38 on this tiny little plat. The woman who used to live here, who lived in this corner right here, her name was Eva Bradshaw. She was a proponent of keeping this area the way it was. Now, her children were not proponents of it because they've sold it. But she wanted to keep it the way it was because it's a pristine part of Laramie, and it's not something that's got stacks of apartments and buildings that are houses close together. We have those across the street in Vista, and that's in the city. I'd much prefer to stay out of the city and stay in the county. The water tastes better there. If you ever came over to my house, I'd give you a drink of water because it's the best water I've ever tasted in my life. This water in Laramie, the city water, is crap. It tastes like chlorine, and I don't appreciate that, especially since I have nice water from my well. And I don't appreciate the cost of having to put in sewer and water because it's not going to be long, and we're going to be totally surrounded and going to be into the city. It's not that I don't like you guys. It's just that I like being out of the city, and I'd appreciate it if you'd consider not making us... Not forcing us into the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Lyndon Delaunay.
Welcome. Did you give your name? Okay. Okay.
Mayor, Councilwoman.
All right. Thank you.
We bought our property out there because we all wanted to live out in the county. That's where we live. That's where we like. We know that eventually, that whole area is going to be under city control. But if you could just not put so many houses on there... I mean, we... I would like to see you all get 128 cars, bicycles, boats, kids, and go out there and drive around that six acres because you're going to find out there's not going to be much housing once 28... 128 of you go. And that's averaging two cars per household. Well, nowadays, kids have cars, so you have, you know, you've got teenagers. Teenagers love our streets because they flood when it rains, and they dip in these holes, and they zip right through with their... I mean, it's ridiculous. We would like to keep it the county, but if you're going to annex it, at least put a thingy on it. I was told after the last meeting by the builder himself that covenants don't mean a thing. They're not worth the paper that they're written on. If that's any indication of a builder and how he's going to build, I don't really think that's going to be a really good thing. He lives out in the paddocks. He lives on seven acres of land. I suggested he go put his six acres of housing out there. He said he can't because he's only allowed one house for covenants. But then he told me that covenants don't mean crap. So, you're obviously annexing us or wanting to. Why can't we annex him? Put all of his houses out there that he wants to build. Anyway, we just want to keep it the county. We know that it's probably not going to be, but we're just kind of hoping you guys kind of think about our lives and what's good for us. And then I also worry about what is going to happen if he doesn't complete the road all the way to Grand. You got... What is the buses going to do? Where are they going to turn around at? Where is the snowplow going to end at? At Fairview and turn back around? It's a mess. I mean, there's a lot of things that need to be worked out if this is going to go through with the annexation.
Thank you. Are there others that would like to speak on this issue? Okay. See, no others. Again, you'll have another chance during the regular meeting. So, we'll close this public hearing, and now I'd like to have our city clerk read the notice of the next public hearing.
Notice is hereby given that the city council will hold a meeting at 6:30 p.m. on August 20th, 2019, in the city council chambers, Laramie City Hall, 406 Iverson Avenue, Laramie, Wyoming, to take public comments for the following. Original ordinance number 2003, amending the city of Laramie's official zoning map to zone newly annexed parcel of land located at 4503 Boba Link Lane as R3 multifamily district within the city of Laramie. All applications and plan... All applications, plans, and specifications relative to this matter are available for review at the city of Laramie Planning Office at 405 Grand Avenue, Laramie, Wyoming. Anyone wishing to be heard may be present... Should be present or may be represented by his or her agent at the meeting.
Thank you. So, now we're talking about zoning the R3 multifamily. Any of you that would like to speak for or against the zoning proposal? This is your chance. One of your chances. Welcome. And then also, after... You can sign it. Well, you can sign it now. When you come forward to speak, give us your name, and then after you're finished speaking, that's probably the best time to sign so we have a record.
Okay.
And welcome.
Thank you. My name is Jim Rector. I live at 4610 Boba Link. Where do we go? I was up here last time we had a meeting. We're against the development. The zoning of this property, the way we understand it, they want to zone it an R3. And an R3 will let commercial use. If they build an apartment complex, you can have up to four unrelated people living in each unit. So, that would be four vehicles if they're like college students. You start adding it up, you're talking over 200 vehicles if they're talking a 64-unit apartment complex. The roads are a big problem. That many people living by me is a big problem. I don't want that at all. Let's see. Yeah. I guess they mentioned an R3 because across Vista Drive, that's... I'm guessing somebody last time we were in here mentioned that zoned R3. I don't know if that's true or not, but they did say that. And that is in the city. It's all paved. We're not, so that's going to create a problem for us. We do have a lot of FedEx, UPS, school buses, semis. I mean, they're always using the road. You can't... You can't really stop that. The potholes are pretty bad. I live at number five, I believe, from Grand Avenue. But yeah, if they're going to zone it, and it is going to be in the city, I'd like to see it like an R2 zoning. They could still build townhouses. Just wouldn't be able to build an apartment complex the way I read it. Last time we had a meeting, we were talking there was a fault line on their land, and so it probably wouldn't be the smartest thing to build on that anyway. Since I've been out in that area, it has flooded quite a few times. It's why there's big culverts underneath Grand Avenue flowing right down in that area. When I was younger, living out there, I couldn't wait till it rained good because I could grab an inner tube and go up on the hill and float down. So, I know somebody said 100-year flood. I think it happens a lot more than that. I believe that's all I got to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Sean Sanders. I am the owner of Animal Health Center right there at the corner of Boba Link and Grand Avenue. I think last meeting, my notes, my email was read that I'd sent in. I have a couple of primary concerns for that area. As an individual, I don't like to see the county turn into city just because of the population. As a business owner, population growth is good for my business. However, I think the location of it is not a good idea. There's a couple of reasons why. Certainly, the flood plain area there, it has flooded since I've been here, and I've been here for seven years. It has flooded at least twice through my... The end of my property and down through that pasture where all those houses would be going, as well as the roads. Right now, as being kind of the primary business there on that road, most of the maintenance that has happened on Boba Link has been myself paying for that, using my own tractor to come and try to grade those potholes as best as I could. It's in need of some serious care. I know the development plan basically had a paving only to Fairview as if all cars would stop there at Fairview and turn around and go back to Vista, and that's not going to be the case. The buildings on the other side of Vista, already, we have lots of cars that go down Boba Link and use it as a cutoff to get to those houses on Vista. And all of that road maintenance falls on myself and the couple of residents that live there on Boba Link to try to maintain those roads. It's, in my opinion, if you put another 30 houses right there with many of them accessing their driveways from Boba Link, it's only going to increase that cost for myself if the roads aren't done properly all the way to Grand and maintained properly all the way to Grand. The other thing that I have concern with is my clinic has a boarding facility. We have sometimes up to 60 or 70 dogs in that boarding facility at any given time. Those dogs go outside multiple times during the day. They make a lot of noise. When you have that many animals, there's a lot of barking. If we put a bunch of residents just a few hundred feet from my door, I think it's going to affect my business poorly as residents of that subdivision are going to complain about the noise. I also run cattle and horses through there. There have been a few occasions where cattle get out and are running through that neighborhood there. Not a problem if there's a few residents in a rural neighborhood. It is a problem if a big bull runs through a neighborhood full of kids and apartment complexes or townhomes. Obviously, it's a liability on me either way. However, certainly, the risk to public safety as well as the risk to my business is greatly increased if we put that many homes right there, right against my property. I've been asked many a time to sell my acreage that borders that property to try to build a larger apartment complex there. It's not going to happen for those reasons. I need to have some sort of buffer. But I would ask that if you do annex that, that you change that zoning to be more of a single-family residence, less homes per acre, to where we can manage those roads better and we're not worried as much about the noise and the operation of the business there. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sanders. Are there others that would like to come forward and speak for or against the zoning for Boba Link?
I'm Kathy Buckard. I live at 4511 Mockingbird Lane. I've been there for 30 years, and I do truly enjoy that area. It's beautiful. Houses have moved in next door to me when I thought I had the whole property all to myself, but those lots got sold and it... People moved in. And I realize that this property has been sold, and things are going to be put there. But I would rather see fewer houses out there to continue with the integrity of what... Whoever designed this, whoever planned this area there. It's not a very big area, and most of it, as you can see, are acre lots. And it would flow much, much more readily and much better if it was a smaller amount of houses going on this property. And like Sean was saying about the dogs, I hear those dogs every single morning at 7:00. It's feeding time, and it's something that I don't mind, but somebody being right next door to them is going to mind. And I think that might be something that isn't going to work. But I think that it needs to be zoned so that there's not going to be as many properties all on that six acres. It's going to be more what was planned in the first place, and I wouldn't have an objection then. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nick Spicer.
Welcome, Nick.
Hello, Mr. Chairman and the board. I agree with everything that everybody has said there, disagreeing with it. And a lot of it is for safety reasons. You get a lot of people in one concentrated area, and of course, there's going to be a lot of traffic and a lot of kids, and dirt roads are going to create a lot of dust for everybody, for the clinic and for people's houses. And I understand that it's going to be paved so far, or that's the idea of it. My thought always was, on a private road, that the people that live on that road are the owners... My thought always was, on a private road, that the people that live on that road are the owners of that road. And so I guess democracy should take role and majority rule of who wants something done differently to that road for changes on it. Also, the liability on a private road is gonna fall on all the landowners that live down that road as well, which you get a lot of people and a lot of reckless drivers. Not that they are, but that's just a possibility. You know, if there's a wreck on the private part of it, then that's gonna be a big liability for all the people there. Everybody that has moved out in that area has moved out into that area because they want a rural-type living situation rather than a urban-type living situation. I think that's it. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Bob, you're next.
Okay, I'll begin.
Go ahead, Wanda.
I'm Wanda McGuire Garcia. I also wanna reiterate what was said last time about the two studies that you had done. And one of them, okay, the R three, and the other one wanted mostly R one for the aquifer. And that is the safest route for Laramie's water. You get a lot of people there. You're more likely to have an accident in the aquifer.
Thank you. Mr. Burkard.
Well, if the difference between R one and R three is strictly greed, then make it R three. But as far as I'm concerned, it needs to be more of a community, and it needs to be R one at the most when you're considering an annexation in that area. R one would be more fair to the people that are already there. And R three would be, I guess, more profitable for the city, but maybe not. Maybe it's by the square foot rather than by the number of residents. I don't know how the tax system works, but I would much prefer, personally, that R one would be the decision that would be made. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any others that would like to speak? Welcome.
Richard Waren, forty-five-twelve Bob Link Lane, mayor, council members. I moved out to Bob Link Lane for the peace and quiet because previous to that, we lived at eleven-twelve Bradley. I don't know if any of you remember where that's at. It's not there anymore. It's a parking lot. We had an eightplex to our left. We had houses across the street that were rentals. I had to have several conversations with my neighbors on respect of one's property. I had to have several of them towed out of my driveway because they thought it was okay to park in my driveway. The question was brought up at the last city council meeting that was, the subject was addressed, I believe it was by Councilman Harrington. They asked the developer what he'd do if this didn't pass. And his comment was, "I have a lot invested in this. I'll have to figure something out." I looked over the legal documents that I received, and it shows to me that the tailor still owns this property. So what exactly does he have invested? My wife and I have had several businesses in Laramie and northern Colorado over the past thirty-five years. We've done our research. We've taken our lumps. This is gonna sound cruel. Not my problem if it doesn't happen. That's a chance you take when you go into business. So it looks to me like the only people that are in favor of this, if you look, I brought some of my close friends with me, is the people that are gonna gain monetarily from this, whether it be the developer, the landowner, or the city. Who has real skin in this game? Does the city? Does the developer? Maybe a little bit.
Let's see, how many of us are here that own land?
Eleven. Nine. How about our investment? That probably doesn't matter. Because when I contacted our representatives, commissioners, you know what they did? They laughed. They said, "We're pretty much wiping our hands of this. This is the city's problem." That's a real way to work together, isn't it? And it's ironic, isn't it, that you guys have the potential of affecting us? We can't vote on you. We can't run against you. We can't do anything. And then we talk about the aquifer. We all talk about the big boys in DC and Cheyenne, and we point our fingers. They're not getting anything done or they're not getting it done to our satisfaction. We got a problem right here, ladies and gentlemen. Who's gonna finally step up to the plate and address it? So I say to you, put yourself in our shoes. Maybe try this, whatever it's called, urban development or whatever. Maybe try it out in Alta Vista, Corthell. Hmm, let's try it there first and see how it works. See how some of you like it. And just remember that the people that live out in this area can't walk away from your decision. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any others that would like to speak? Yes, please come forward.
Sharon Cumby, fourteen-twenty-two East Park. And I'd just like to start by a comment that I've been at the corner of Park and Fifteenth Street for about twenty years. And when we first moved there, believe it or not, it was rather a quiet neighborhood. And then, as the university acquired the parking lot and established an express bus line every twenty minutes, all day long, we have that going. And then the increased development south of Spring Creek has brought additional traffic. And in the last two years, the nature of the neighborhood has changed completely. It stirs up dust. There's dust all over everything. The university even tried to route excavation dirt down Fifteenth Street until I made a number of calls to get that rerouted. And so it's those types of things that start happening when that type of activity and density moves into a neighborhood. So my concern is about the aquifer and the fault zone, the fault line, that runs through the northeast corner of this property. And in the map that has been distributed in the packet of materials, it reads in that northeast corner, "Future Development Area." And as I read the reports and the annexation report by Dowell, it wasn't really clear whether that twenty-residence multifamily apartment complex to be located south and east of the city of Laramie. Is that a second location, or is that that northeast corner? So I'm unclear about that. So what we have right now is a plan for thirty-two twin units. That's sixty-four total units. If you average two people per unit, we're looking at a hundred and twenty-eight people. It's not really close to a lot of things, so you would assume that each of those people will need transportation. So we're looking in excess of a hundred and twenty-eight cars. The fault line stretches, is not actually a fault line, it is a fault zone that has multiple smaller fissures that run along that. So hydrogeologist Chris Moody, in his report, indicated that seventy-five to one hundred feet of the fault line made up this fault zone. And that any type of development should have a one-hundred-foot setback from vulnerable sections. The fault line offers a direct opening into the aquifer where we could contaminate a major source of the water for the city of Laramie. I've read in the report a number of times, some of these proposed exceptions referred to as limited exceptions. But to me, it's starting to sound more like we are making unlimited limited exceptions. In our statements about the property, I'm hearing it referred to as about six acres. But in the materials, it's actually five-point-three-six-five. Well, that's not about six. That's about five. And so we're talking about high-density development on about five acres. And that's a mighty big impact. And I'd like to know what the plans are for that northeast corner. And are we going to put an apartment building there? And are we willing to risk it? And thank you very much for listening. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Any others? And again, this will come up again during the regular meeting. All right, seeing none, we're gonna close this public hearing. And then we, so, and again, thank you for your comments. Thank you for the way in which you presented your comments. And we look forward to hearing more discussion on this as we get into the agenda. So the next item that we have on our agenda is announcements. Does city manager, do we have any announcements from the city?
We have one announcement, Mayor.
Okay. Mr. Fieser, welcome.
Honorable Mayor, City Council, I don't know that I have to remind anybody that school starts tomorrow, but keep that in mind as you're traveling through our community and drive safely. But with school starting, it also kind of marks the end of summer and the end of our pool season. So I'd remind everybody about some dates related to our pools at the Recreation Center, Washington Park, and the Splash Pad at Undine. The outdoor leisure pool, the last open day is next Sunday, the twenty-fifth. Dog Day at the pool will be on September first. So if you wanna bring your dogs out and enjoy the pool, come out on September first. Washington Park Waiting Pool, the last day will be Saturday, the twenty-fourth, with Dog Day in the park on the twenty-fifth. So you can bring your dog out and enjoy the waiting pool on the twenty-fifth and have vendors there that you'll be able to get some assistance with your dog or some information. The Splash Pad last day is September second, which is Labor Day. And then, of course, to kick off the end of summer, we start it with Free Ice Day at the Ice and Event Center on September seventh. So you can go from the heat of the summer into the nice, cool confines of the Ice and Event Center. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fieser. That's all the announcements, okay? So now, are there any disclosures by anyone on the city council that has any conflicts regarding any of the items on the consent or the regular agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll now go to our vice mayor for the approval of the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. I would move that the consent agenda be approved as changed, and that each specific action on the consent agenda be approved as indicated.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded by Councilor Pierce. Do we have a roll call?
Harrington.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
O'Doherty.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Stalder.
Yes.
Weaver, absent. Gabriel.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
That's eight yeses and zero noes and one absent, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you. So the consent agenda has been approved unanimously. Now we move to our regular agenda. Item number ten is Councilor O'Doherty.
I move to approve resolution three-nineteen-sixty-four enacting a temporary suspension of Traffic Commission activities until revision of Laramie Municipal Code ten-point-zero-eight to allow staff time to review, evaluate, and recommend changes to City Council and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded by Councilor Pierce. We're gonna have an introduction by our city attorney, Bob Suther.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So clearly, this motion is asking you to take a pause in the operations of the Traffic Commission until we can work on the structure of that Traffic Commission. I gotta say, we've certainly been talking about traffic and parking around here lately, but this is not, this is not an issue that has to do with the good volunteers on the Traffic Commission. I mean, we've had this Traffic Commission for a long time. And we've had a lot of citizens spend a lot of time doing good work for the Traffic Commission. So I don't wanna mix up the two. It's not to do with the current Traffic Commission or all the volunteers we've had in the past. In the background, I mean, for me, it starts, you know, a couple of years ago, probably, when I, this Traffic Commission ordinance came to me and sort of coincidentally, and I was looking at it, and I said, "Well, this can't be true." I mean, so this literally can't mean what it says. And so I think I called up probably the Public Works Director, then Earl Smith, and I said, "Anybody read this?" And Earl said, "You know, you're a little late to the party. We are not, you're not the first person to notice this." And we're starting to work internally on what we can do to bring this up to any sort of modern standard. Because what I noticed, first of all, is clearly a historical sort of appendage in city ordinances. I would guess, if it's not a hundred years old, it's probably ninety years old and back into the early nineteen hundreds when this town was probably half horses, half cars. There weren't things like city engineers. There weren't things like state statutes on these matters. And it looked like the council back then just wanted somebody else to deal with the few little traffic lines that had to be set at the streets. Because then what I see substantively, looking at that ordinance, is sort of the... This is unique among all the boards and commissions. I mean, the power is vast and apparently unchecked. I mean, now, clearly, in practice, you've sort of worked out how to do this over the years. But as written, you know, there are no bylaws. There's no standards of proceedings or what goes in front of the commission. And the power, if you read it, you know, as is written, is absolutely remarkable. I mean, they, you know, can control all parking, all U-turns, all lanes, all lane markings. And this is not control all U-turns, all left turns. And this is not control as in we recommend it to council, or if council approves it, it's Traffic Commission absolutely controls that matter. Now, in reality, sort of tried to work that through with good work from the staff in front of the commission and everybody trying to work this out in practice. But it doesn't look that way on paper, and it's starting, I think, finally, you know, to cause some difficulties. There are no standards in the Traffic Commission ordinance, nor have any been adopted by the Traffic Commission over the decades. So exactly what, you know, if the Traffic Commission wanted to eliminate all left turns in Laramie... in Laramie, how are they to measure that decision? Because it'll never come in front of you if we take this ordinance as it was written a hundred years ago. There's no delineation of, you know, staff role or procedures, or how anything comes before the commission, or how things are decided, or how it comes to council. Because as you know, I mean, we have boards and commissions that are, you can be a hundred percent advisory, as you've had, you know, Parks, Recreation Board, they're about a hundred percent advisory, and you've had things come to you because they advise you. Planning Commission might be on the other end of the, you know, the technical scale, where it's, you know, there's an inch of ordinance saying who does what when it comes to council, who appeals it to council, you know, what they do. But there's none of that in the Traffic Commission, there's no guidance at all. So, you know, that leads to just enormous amount of staff time trying to figure out what to do. The, as I say, the procedures, you know, next, that's substance, and I could go on more about that, but there's the procedural difficulties that this causes without the bylaws, without internal processes, without any qualifications for who sits on Traffic Commission, like we have on, you know, some other boards. Staff roles, because there's no delineation, that just leads to terrible confusion. I'm probably not the one to talk to this, but last, it's a managerial problem, big problem. Because staff has to spend a lot of time in uncertainty going in front of a commission that is also uncertain, and it's just very, becomes very, very difficult. Like, I think staff, as I understand it, you know, staff has done a great job trying to work with the commission and saying, well, okay, this is a problem, let's try this. But you can reach a point here where the commission, can they order staff to spend money? Can they spend money that hasn't been appropriated, you know, for a traffic study and/or this or that? Can they order? I don't know. And I know that the current Traffic Commission would never do this. I'm a lawyer, I'm thinking about possibilities, not probabilities, but can they order city staff to go get rid of all the left turn lanes on Grand? You know, you hope not, but we'd figure a way, we'd figure a way around that. But as written, this looks like a hundred-year-old ordinance. And it is a hundred-year-old ordinance, and it needs to be updated. We think, and Counselor O'Doherty, I looked at, you know, your proposal, that we try to do both, that we try to keep the Traffic Commission operating and come forward with recommendations. And I think you all need to discuss that. It had been my thought that if we get the current Traffic Commission members to be involved in this process of fixing the Traffic Commission, that having them do both is probably not ideal. But you, those are your decisions, not mine. So, are there questions?
Any questions? Counselor Harrington, then Vice Mayor.
Vice Mayor was actually up before me.
Vice Mayor Gabriel, then Counselor Harrington.
I recall a situation recently with Willet by the hospital, that the Traffic Commission asked the city to take a look at the speed limit in that area. And then we had the Fourth and Clark situation, where it went before the Traffic Commission. So I'm asking the question concerning, you talk about it being unique, and seems to me, for instance, the Traffic Commission took care of the Willet situation, correct? And it never came before council.
I could let certainly the engineer speak to what happened at that meeting.
But I don't recall it coming before us.
Here's how I see that as your lawyer, which is, that's how staff and Traffic Commission tried to just kind of wiggle it around to get it to people's satisfaction. Cooperation by staff, Traffic Commission trying to puzzle it through. But there is not a single procedure in the world.
Right.
Why that would even be in front of the Traffic Commission, or what the Traffic Commission's power should be, or if they disagree with staff, can they order staff to do it? That's not what happened, Counselor Gabriel. It's a testament to both the Traffic Commission volunteers and staff. But that's all kind of just sort of common law of Traffic Commission.
So that one example, and then we have Fourth and Clark, the situation there with the restricted parking, Traffic Commission takes it up, and yet it's coming back before us.
Right.
So that's what you're talking about, is trying to get some kind of uniformity in decision-making and structure of the Traffic Commission?
Let me, I'm going to be very blunt about the Fourth and Clark situation. I have no idea why it's in front of council, and I know, I see no option other than having it in front of council. And that's, that's the problem.
But I, okay, thank you. I think I know where you're coming from. Thank you, Mayor.
Counselor Harrington.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just curious what happens with the things that would otherwise be routed to Traffic Commission if they are to be suspended? Like, what happens in that?
The staff, and I think primarily, and again, the folks who deal with this every day can speak of it, those would just be handled in the normal course. The most common one being handicap parking. I mean, most, most street and traffic stuff never comes anywhere near the Traffic Commission, and that would all happen in the normal course.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
What's the timeline that we're looking at for, like, revisiting this ordinance?
I think we ask for, to bring something back to you within six months.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Other questions regarding this suspension? Seeing none, for the audience, is there anyone that would like to make comments or questions regarding this? Nancy Sendalar, thank you for your service, and thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Oh, I've been ready for this one. Just got a message from one of the-
Could you just give us, for the record, your name?
I just, no, here.
And also?
Nancy Sendalar, I have been chairing the Traffic Commission, I'm speaking for myself, not the Commission. I'm going to pounce on me, I'll forget to sign in. Okay, I expect the Traffic Commission to change, and I recognize, we've got, you know, how do we run the show? We've all bumbled along, I think it's not a ninety years, I think it's only like seventy. I saw a copy of Traffic Ordinances that was written in nineteen thirty-three. I managed to see a copy that a retired sheriff's deputy showed me, but I don't have a copy of it. And looking at that ordinance, it's in the style of one that was a long time ago, that ordinances were very broad and subject to a lot more interpretation than the things we write now. And from when I took Parks and Recreation at the university, that was something we got into. The first issue I am going to bring up is, we must conform with state statutes and rules and such. And it's the disconnect we've got going on between the intent of what the Traffic Commission's voted on at Fourth and Clark, five to two, to restore the parking the way it was. That was our full intent. There is no confusion with any of the Traffic Commission members on that. I mean, we all read the meeting minutes, the city staff read the meeting minutes, we voted to approve unanimously those meeting minutes. That was our intent, five to two. And which surprises me, because we're almost always unanimous, and we get along really well. It's not even a logic problem. It's all about this intent. Robert's Rules of Order has a very simple solution to it. And that is, next time the Traffic Commission meets, we, and I looked this up, and this was a whole hour's worth of research on the internet to find this, the proper instructions on this with Roberts. My book's from nineteen forty-three. So I had to look up the current ones. To correct a mistake in the minutes after they have already been approved, which apparently there is a mistake in the minutes, someone has found a negative of a negative to the nth degree, something or other, which I don't understand, I don't do logic problems. In order to correct a mistake in the minutes after they have already been approved, a member must make a motion to, quote, amend something previously adopted. Input the exact wording of the motion to amend something previously adopted in the minutes of the meeting at which the motion was raised. In other words, the next Traffic Commission meeting, and whether it was accepted or denied. And that's Robert's Rules, newly revised, tenth edition, Cambridge, Mass., two thousand, page four fifty-two, et cetera, et cetera. Since the city uses Robert's Rules of Order to conduct our meetings, the city would be remiss not to make this correction, to say, well, you didn't vote this way, when we all thought our intent was that we did. This is just a technical, it's, yeah, this is what Robert says we have to do. So, please at least allow us to have one more meeting so we can clear this matter up for you. Okay. Because that's what Robert says we have to do, not, but some other people choose what we do, but Robert says we have to make this correction, we have to cover this error. So, let us have one more meeting. Now, we now have to make a lot of changes. There's another reason we should not be suspended. Three of the members, including myself, yours truly here, our terms expire October thirty-first. Of the three members whose terms are expiring, I consider that there are three people that have been around for a long time, have a lot of knowledge, including myself, I'm the littlest one. One of them is Harold Colby. Mr. Colby was the Public, not Public Works, Street Department, I believe, for thirty years? He knows every manhole in this town. He knows the streets, he knows what's going on, he knows how things work. He's up for, to re-up in two months, two months and a couple of days, deadline. I'm up for re-upping, Will Hutchinson is up for re-upping. How are we going to deal with that? How do we re-up to a commission that's suspended? What happens then? Of these three people that I consider the experienced members on the commission, we also, you know, we're, are we going to lose that if we're just sitting on our keisters waiting for somebody else to come up with a plan? I would like to see us, I think there's smart people, and I come out of meetings sometimes with my head spinning, the ideas people have come up with to solve problems, and I'm like, I thought I was smart, but man, this is, it's, 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 when I've sat there or over there at Carnegie, I'm like, wow! And we've come up with creative solutions to difficult situations. That's Will Hutchinson texting me, he's down at Fort Collins, he couldn't make the meeting.
His daughter is in the hospital.
That's off the record, okay? Okay, some history. Bikes, pedestrians, horses, drays, oh, we're already here. Here's just an interesting fact, just give you some humor for a minute here. In the mid nineteen, or eighteen nineties, there were three hundred cars in the United States. There were five million bicycles. Just pick that little factoid up. Traffic Commission came about because there was one type of transportation that was moving a whole lot faster than everybody else, and that was the automobile. And coming into town, that's great, but when you get in town, you got to slow down. There were, I didn't see it in Laramie, but there were rules that somebody had to walk in front of a car with a flag saying, car coming, car coming, car coming, that didn't last very long. But that was because, like horses, they bolted sometimes. Cars weren't the nice, well-equipped, they didn't have stereos, I'll tell you that, and they didn't have airbags. The Traffic Commission has a history of being fiscally conservative. Anytime we have opted to spend money, restriping a street, putting in stop signs, the exception was granted to us for handicap parking only because of the timeliness needed for it. Anytime we try to spend money, it goes before council. We're not elected, we can't spend the citizens' money. You guys can't. That's your job, is to be careful in how you spend it. We haven't had that. We asked the engineers to go back and look at Fourth and Clark, because they did their, they counted their cars when school was out. That's one of the things I would like to see put in our rules, is that traffic studies, speed studies, all happen when the university is in session. That is critical, because that's almost a third of our population, it's a quarter to a third somewhere in there, it varies, depending on what day of the week, it varies. But that is so important to be done. Okay. And I did, I actually found it's easier to listen to your work session than it was to attend, because I hit the pause button, write things down, it started, and I can back it up and hear it again. Did I hear that correctly? Yes, okay. So I did listen carefully to your work session last week. I'll have you know, I was right there. Some of the changes I'd like to see. We had a special meeting to help with and be involved with traffic studies, we volunteered to help with traffic studies. And that's because several, that was several individuals, because we're retired, I could sit in an intersection for a couple hours, count cars, I can do that, if that would help the city. We also, at that meeting, helped in notifying property owners, businesses, we had the one-way streets downtown. A lot of property owners, or business owners, not property owners, weren't notified. I'm a property owner, I wasn't notified. And they were going to take away my driveway and put diagonal parking out in front of my house, and I mean, I didn't hear about it. There has to be a way, and Traffic Commission can do that. We need a specific rule on the notification of the public, property owners and tenants' businesses, when changes are made to travel ways and/or parking. Oh, and I'll assure you, we're not going to eliminate left turns all over camp. For that, I will speak for the commission, we are not going to eliminate left turns all over town. I want to see something written in that our city streets will be designed for thirty miles an hour, no more. The Thirtieth and Willet, that's got an engineered design of forty-five miles an hour. I somewhere actually have the speed study that came from the Laramie Speed Study that showed that it was designed for forty-five miles an hour. We need to eliminate the notion, the idea, that we have to have efficient traffic movement. One, that's saying traffic is automobiles, and two, efficiency means more cars going faster. We have plenty of room on our streets to get everybody where they want to go without letting them drive faster than thirty-five. Willet Drive up there is, was designed for forty-five in a residential neighborhood. And if the speed limit's thirty-five, people should not be encouraged to drive faster. People drive as fast as they think it's safe. I've looked down, I'm doing ninety on the interstate. Whoa, watch out for the copper, slow down, because there's no reason to think it's unsafe. It's, drive Grand Avenue. When you're driving this part of, well, right now, nobody's driving Grand Avenue, but when you drive Grand Avenue, there's trees, there's businesses, there's signs, there's stuff. At this end of town, nobody has any problem doing thirty miles an hour less. You get out the other end of town, it turns to forty-five, and if you stand there at that sign and you look east, you look west, you cannot see a lick of difference between where it's thirty and where it's forty-five, except the sign. And it looks like, people start picking up speed as soon as they cross Thirty Street, because it's wide, it's, there's nothing to hit, there's nothing there. That's moving traffic efficiently rather than safely. Try crossing at like Thirty-second or so, or wherever that is, on Grand Avenue. It's terrifying. Okay, we need to restructure the fee schedule for citizens requesting modifications to parking or modifications to traffic control. I can see for a developer, yes, that should be part of rolled into the costs of developing a property, getting it, or like this annexation project you're working on now, how you're going to deal with the traffic and the parking, that should be part of the cost of setting up the development, so it's shared by all the homeowners eventually in that neighborhood. Not that, I shouldn't say that neighborhood, I should say in that development, please excuse my error. I'd like to see a way to speed up processes of request, because it does take a lot of time for the engineers to work on stuff. Right now, if we meet on a Thursday morning, the following Monday is the deadline for getting in a request to the Traffic Commission to be on our next meeting. And then, even if it comes up in the next meeting, then there's another month before it to come up for us to vote on our minutes, we've got to find a faster way of being able to do things. I have never seen the City Boards and Commission handbook. I found out about it listening to your work session last week. Was it Boards and Commission handbook? Hmm. I tried writing one for the Traffic Commission, it was just an introduction. The library, the League of Women Voters held boards of all the heads of all the commissions. the commissions in two thousand fourteen, fifteen. So, I sat down and wrote up, typed it up, researched it, made sure I had everything, so I had my ducks in a row, so I could speak clearly. And then I turned that and, turned that into something that a new member of the board, the commission, could look at and say, "Okay, we use Robert's Rules of Order, we meet at seven o'clock on the second Thursday," you know, just all that kind of stuff, and just the basics of how things go. I've offered it to the city twice, I've turned it in both electronically and on paper. Um, nothing's come of it, but it's a way of helping other fellow commissioners get their feet on the ground. Um, and I'd love to have that Boards and Commission, I've never gotten it. Um, got that one covered. Our, our current enabling ordinance does not say that only cars are traffic. That's a good start, and that should be kept. Uh, the city needs a group of concerned citizens who will question why, um, the safety of people is not paramount over the safety of people in cars. Currently, the number of people dying in, in, in traffic accidents, traffic crashes, is going up. The number of pedestrians and bicyclists is going up. Yes, people are driving faster. The vehicles are changing. Not only is it the number, but it's the percentage. Vehicles are changing. Cars have airbags. Pedestrians don't have airbags. Cars have seat belts. Pedestrians don't have seat belts. The only thing pedestrians have going for them are cars parked along the road and, I don't know if we can see one from here, but, you know, there's one of the nice ones, but the regular overhead, the, I think they call them Cobra Heads, the, the lights at night. If you walk up to one of those and you look at it, there are bolts holding that thing to the ground. They didn't just sink the posts in the ground, no, they put those bolts there because if a car hits it, it will break away. Less injury to the driver. What about the pedestrian standing next to it? The pedestrian is not going to break away, the pedestrian's going to die. So, our system is designed for the convenience and the comfort of the vehicle operator instead of the person walking along next to the road. We need to change that as a paradigm for, um, traffic. And we need a group of concerned citizens who question why, in the traffic studies done on Forth and Clark, in one of the most dense neighborhoods in our community, that you-shaped the original part of town, of the smaller houses with basement apartments, back apartments, upstairs apartments, very dense population of town, four blocks from a grocery store, and nobody's walking? Why isn't anybody walking? Really? Why? Is it scary, maybe? Have you tried crossing Fourth Street, especially carrying four bags of groceries? Have you tried crossing Third Street carrying four bags of groceries? I don't, I have the good luck to be able to come down Second Street, go through downtown, and go behind to get to the grocery store. Because I live on the other side of Third Street. If you live on the university side of Third Street and you want to cross that with your groceries? Just think how much more, I mean, there's a grocery store there, there's a gym there, there's, um, uh, there's a pizza place, there's a, uh, like consignment, uh, pawn shop, there's a lot of business there that could probably do a lot better if people could walk to the store. Yeah, but they, they're afraid to. What is it that we have so much support for people and cars, that people on foot are afraid to go there? Why didn't they find any pedestrians when they did the traffic study? Where were they? You know? If they're going to get in the car, they might go up this way, or they might go up that way. They might, yeah, but to get in your car to go four blocks to the grocery store, that doesn't make sense. It's not healthy. It's not health, and one of the old rules in the Traffic Commission is to reduce congestion. And the more we get people out of cars, the less congestion we have.
Nancy, I'm...
You're go, I know I'm going on...
But let me just say this, I know you're very organized, and I know you have this written down. You have a lot of great ideas, and obviously that's why you're here.
Well, that's all my, that's that on that stuff. And I did finally get my statistics on the driver's licenses.
All right, would you give this information to our city attorney so that we, they can use that, you know, and, because like you said...
Yeah, I could go on, yeah, you know me, I can talk.
I know.
Um, okay, the rest is on the statistics, I actually have the, and I'm going to finish up here.
Okay.
The national, art, as of January, when I did this study, there are twenty-four-thousand three hundred and seventeen current valid operators' licenses in the county, and thirty-eight-thousand three hundred and thirty-two residences, which works out to thirty-six point five percent of non-drivers. And I also quoted an article in The Boomerang that is, um, a quarter of our population is at the poverty level or below. And that was an article from The Boomerang, the fifth of April, and I went back and looked at the original studies, um, the federal studies, and it's, Boomerang copied, got the information correctly, and poor people, what do they do? They stop driving, they walk. And they're still people. And if you're interested, I brought back, because I talked about this two weeks ago, you're welcome to this, it's my spreadsheet where I looked at the different amount of tax generated in downtown, a block of downtown, a block of a upper residential neighborhood, and a big box store. So, if you want that...
If you have a copy, you can give that to our clerk.
And please look at it, it's, it's just, it's just, it's my, it's research, it's raw, it's not a pretty demonstration.
Also, Nancy, the handbook for Boards and Commissions is available, you can get your copy, it's online, and if you'd get with the city clerk, we'll make sure that, you should have one, and we'll give one to you.
I should.
And then, one other thing, I know you're wrapping up, but one other thing, I saw on the news this week that they have a bicyclist that now went a hundred and seventy-eight miles an hour, and their goal is to do two-hundred-and-twenty miles an hour by the end of two thousand twenty.
And what kind of wind tunnel were they in on the Bonneville Salt Plats? I didn't see that, but that's my guess.
You'll see it, and they are in a kind of a, but they're independent, but they're in a tunnel. Anyway, I don't want to get into that.
Yeah, that's fun stuff.
But cars, cars and automobiles are going much faster than pedestrians seem to be, just keeping the same old pace. Anyway...
No, no, there's one other point I wanted to make.
Give you one minute to wrap up, okay?
Okay. Uh, I don't remember, it was at the, um, what do you call it? The, the work session you had last week, one of the commissioners, and I can't always hear who's speaking, so I'm not sure who it was, it might have been you, Mr. Schuster, um, said that the light at Fourth, or Thirtieth and Willet was flashing red, and wow, it slowed me way down. If you had been walking, you'd actually would have been more efficient, because you wouldn't have had to wait for the light to change. Had you been riding a bike, you would have had, just wait until it's time for you to take your turn through the four-way stop. Efficiency is not more cars going faster, efficiency is, it was safe. I bet you there weren't any crashes there, because everybody slowed down. I want to see the Traffic Commission not be suspended, specifically so we can correct the minutes, and so that we can work out with the city, with the staff, there's smart people on that board, how to do it, how to be better for our community. Yeah?
All right, thank you, Nancy.
I'm tired this time.
Nancy, if you'd give your notes to whoever...
Um, no, I will send, I will email them, can I do that, please?
Yes, yes.
Because my, I've got scribbles all over it, and it's in, Nancy will talk, it's not in legible talk.
Okay, if you get that, thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to...
Thank you for letting me speak, and I'm sorry for my outwards last time.
Well, thank you. And anyone else who wants to speak on this item? Back to the council, any comments from the council? Councilor Doherty?
Yeah, I'm, I would just like to say that I have great faith in the Traffic Commission. I think the reason it hasn't gotten out of hand is because Ms. Zindalar really respects democracy and knows that the Traffic Commission shouldn't be spending money unless it's coming to us. Uh, Mr. Colby's, um, impression was that when, at least this is the way I understood it in the, um, in the phone call, that it's when we approve their minutes that we're approving the, um, the, the decisions of the Traffic Commission. But my understanding from our lawyer is, no, we're just approving, we're just saying we've received the minutes and that they reflect what the Traffic Commission says were their minutes. So, so it's not the opportunity for us to have a, a check or balance on the Traffic Commission. So, so I trust the Traffic Commission to not go crazy and start putting stop signs all over the place. But I do think the ordinance needs updating, and I would like it to have input from the current Traffic Commission members. So, I think I would like to put an amendment that adds the words after evaluate, say, with input from current Traffic Commission members to the ordinance, to the ordinance says red. I could read the whole thing if you want to hear it, or I could email it. Um, so just to add, because I do think that they can offer some valuable information and, and not necess, you know, like the staff would start with it, but get some input.
Mayor, point of order, just maybe for the public, I think it would be worth reading with the amendment.
Yes, do you have, do you have your language ready?
Yes, I have it, okay.
And does the, does the city clerk have a copy of...
I will send it to her once I remember how to do it.
Okay, and, and then, uh, go ahead and make your amendment, and then I'm going to go to Counselor Pierce. Do you want to, Counselor Pierce, do you want to say something right now?
Yeah, so, if, if it's all right, can we make, not necess, I think it's a resolution, right? So, can we amend the resolution? And maybe, I like your idea, I was kind of going there too, somehow, you, I was thinking like, amending the resolution down in the section part, you know, maybe section six by adding an establishment of a ad hoc committee, or, or a few members of the Traffic Commission, or, or something there, because this isn't an ordinance, this is a...
Resolution.
Resolution. So, I think we have to amend the resolution. Am I...
Right, yeah, so mine was out of, mine was improper then.
Well, not proper.
My amendment is in the wrong place, yeah. So, so I withdraw that.
So, can we just...
We need to have, well, again, you, we've already invited, uh, input from the Traffic Commission by bringing their notes to us, we're going to consider everything that everybody has. So, I don't think that that's going to take any formal action in the sense that we're, we're going to be listening to every, every thought that we can to make this right, if it passes. Are you okay?
I withdraw the amendment because I agree with what you said.
Anything else, Counselor Pierce?
So, so, we don't, we, we're thinking we don't need...
We can give direction to staff.
An ad hoc committee or something?
An ad hoc committee would be formed, and they would have to go through their process.
Right.
And if that's what you want to form, that would be something we would form, and I, uh, city attorney, that would be formed independent of this resolution, correct, an ad hoc committee?
Well, I'm going to take input from, uh, the city manager, but as, as written, um, this just has staff go off, and certainly they'd solicit input from any number of people, but come back to council with our suggestions, um, and then council could have unlimited input. This does not set up an ad hoc committee, which adds another layer of bureaucracy to the process.
Mayor, we could...
Let, let Counselor Pierce finish her thought.
Yeah, I, I, what I, I guess what I have in my head is maybe city staff do their work for a, a established amount of time, and then after that, maybe we discuss and think, well, maybe it's time to get more input from the public, and then we form a ad hoc committee or something and kind of hash through the potential recommendations coming from staff. I don't necessarily know if that needs to be in the resolution, though, or if that's something we can do down the road. I just think it's a...
That would be up to council, I think.
Yeah, so, I just feel like it's important to continue the dialogue, but I know...
Sure.
I don't know where it needs to go in here.
All right, well, let's go to Counselor Harrington, then Counselor Schuster, and if you have other thoughts.
Okay.
Counselor Schuster, and then we'll come back to you if you have anything specific.
Tonight, we are doing, I'll make sure I do this right, a resolution, so we get one try. This isn't like an ordinance where we have three readings. Tonight, we're going to make a final decision on this, one way or the other. And in my opinion, with some of the people on this Traffic Commission, their experience and everything, I don't want to see them go away. Right now, if we suspend them, we, we basically told them we didn't like what they did. And, and that, and I just, I realize it needs to be updated, there needs to be some rules, but we have a thing about this, they're throwing in, and I'm going to use the word, they're throwing in a human factor in it, where they're talking to people, they've often do traffic counts, things like that, and I, I will not support just erasing them. I, I, I want to keep them on board, if we need to put in some more rules, that's fine. If we need them to do some train, that's fine. If we say that in the next, the next available group of people that are being assigned to the Traffic Commission, if so many of them have to have this degree or something like that, I'm fine. But right now, they are what we have, and we need to work with them. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to go to Counselor Gabriel, but before I do that, I want to echo the words of Counselor Schuster. We appreciate the work that this Traffic Commission has done. They have worked hard, they have brought some great ideas to the city council, to the staff, and we, and it's my understanding that we have no intention to eliminate the Traffic Commission. They will be, they will remain as they are in most cities, a very important part of our community. Before I go to Counselor Gabriel, uh, city manager, Jordan.
Uh, Mayor and council, I just wanted to note that I don't read the resolution, or do I believe staff read the resolution, as a dissolution of the Traffic Commission. Um, the intention was to suspend their operations, that does not suspend reappointment upon expired, expired terms, it does not suspend the ability of the Traffic Commission to review and make recommendations to the city council. What it suspends is the operational activities where they're making decisions and directing staff until we get some standards and rules in order, as was recommended by me in the April eighth memo to the city council, and also by our previous, um, public works director. So, just in clarifying staff's understanding, we don't see this as a dissolution, reappointments will continue, they're a duly constituted entity under our municipal code, we need to keep them fully staffed, and we will be consulting with them for recommendations relative to standards and any modification of the ordinance to thereby modify Traffic Commission's role, activities, et cetera, in the future.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Uh, let's see, Counselor Gabriel.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to clarify...
Vice Mayor Gabriel.
Just to clarify again for Ms. Zindalar and the councils, what happens to those three individual commissioners whose terms expire in October? Do we...
Reapply.
They reapply? Do we interview them and then continue on?
Correct.
Through you, Mayor, and Vice Mayor Gabriel, unless the city attorney disagrees with me, no, well, those, the, this is a duly constituted body, it exists by code, and until we change it, we have to continue treating it as a living body, so to speak, meaning when people expire, we'll need to go through your standard processes for accepting reapplication, as the mayor said, interviews conducted by the city council, and reappointments so that they're adequately staffed or adequately appointed.
Nancy Zindalar, we're not talking about when they...
When I expire.
...expire, when your term expires.
Term is a very important word there.
Stay healthy and reapply.
I'm trying, I'm trying.
Okay, is that everything?
That's it, thanks.
Okay. Counselor Doherty, and then I want to come back, Counselor Pierce, if you have...
I, I found a place for my amendment in the actual resolution under section three.
Okay.
And, um, I've sent it to Nancy, or the clerk, so maybe...
Would you read it for the council?
I'll read, I'll read it. So, section three, within six months of the effective date of this resolution, city staff shall bring to council recommendations for updating Laramie Municipal Code, and then I've added the phrase, "with input from the Traffic Commission members," and then back to the original is, "to address the issues noted in this resolution."
Perfect.
Okay.
I'll second that.
There's this motion and a second, any discussion on the amendment?
I sent an email, yeah. I'm perfect.
Any, any, any comments from the public on this amendment? One more chance for the council, we'll vote on the amendment to the resolution. Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to give you another minute.
Okay, a minute, I, I just want to say, thank you for putting in the amendment. I would like to see members of the commission actively involved in this process. Um, we have experience, I mean, you know, I was in the military, I pushed dirt and read grade stakes, but I was also a fire inspector, and I've done some of this stuff, I understand it. We have experience that isn't necessarily college degrees. We have experience that, um, it's not just life, uh, quality of life, it's experience that helps in, uh, in our decision-making process, and it needs to be respected the same, at the same level as college degrees. Thank you.
Thank you. I agree.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, Counselor Stalter, did I have someone before that?
You're fine, Aaron fixed everything, you're fine.
Counselor Stalter.
I just wanted to make a comment on the original resolution, before we talk about the amendment, that I really appreciate the technical knowledge that staff bring, you know, especially from a safety standpoint, but as elected officials, we really have a duty to listen to the public, and I think that's where the Traffic Commission comes in. The city attorney mentioned that there's not really a process for when things are supposed to come, before council, or not, so if all these requests are being dealt with at a staff level, even for the next six months, you know, how does council ever know about any of this stuff? And that's what I appreciate about the Traffic Commission. And I looked at my city council orientation handbook about boards and commissions, and it says, "The purpose of the boards and commissions is to provide a local perspective," which is getting at that human element. And I think, you know, when staff brings us a recommendation, we usually accept that recommendation, but the Traffic Commission brings a lot of times a different perspective. And Benjamin Franklin said that democracy is two wolves and a lamb deciding what to have for dinner. So, if we have the staff's recommendation and no other information, you know, are we doing our duty as elected officials? Even if we just suspend that for six months, I don't think that's right.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion on the amendment? Let's vote on the amendment?
McKinney?
No.
O'Doherty?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
Stalter?
No.
Weaver? Absent. Gabriel?
Yes.
Chumway?
Yes.
We have six yeses, two nos, and one absent, Your Honor.
Okay, so the amendment passes, now we're back to the main motion as amended. City Manager Jordan.
Mayor, if I could, I wanted to clarify my and staff's understanding of the resolution and the activities that the city staff will engage in during the temporary suspension of Traffic Committee activities. Section four of your resolution notes that until council enacts ordinance revisions that city manager or designees, which would effectively be Public Works and Engineering staff, will continue to manage city streets and traffic safety issues. So that's the first thing, we would only handle in those six months, any imminent safety matters in our city streets and transportation system. And then the section concludes, and also will review handicap parking space requests. So my intention is that we will only deal with imminent safety issues as may arise, which at this point, I'm not aware of any. And the second is handicap parking spaces, just to keep serving that community in a timely fashion.
Okay, thank you. Okay, back to the main motion, anything else from the council, questions or comments? Public, another opportunity on the main motion, the resolution as amended. Council, one more chance, roll call.
Harrington?
Yes.
McKinney?
No.
O'Doherty?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Stalter?
No.
Schuster?
No.
Weaver, absent. Gabriel?
Yes.
Chumway?
Yes.
That's five yeses, three nos, and one absent, Your Honor.
Okay, so that resolution has now passed, and the staff and the community will start working on this, so we can get to the point where we have clarity. Okay, our next item is item number 11.
Can we take a break?
Do you wanna take a break?
Yes.
Take a five-minute break?
That was our first item on the regular agenda.
Yeah, why not? We're doing good.
Yes, indeed.
Counselor, do you want to take a five-minute break?
Yes.
Okay, I hear enough people saying they'll take a five-minute break, so we're gonna start right at eight ten. I'll give you seven minutes.
Okay.
Eight ten.
There you go.
All right, let's go ahead and get started back with our regular agenda. Item number 11 is Counselor Pierce, if you would introduce item 11 to us.
Sure, I move to approve Resolution 2019-63, amending the Code of Conduct regarding public comment intervals and adding a comment period at the beginning of the meeting and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded by Counselor Schuster. City Clerk.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The resolution before you tonight came from the result of a work session that we held. The subject was requested by Counselor Schuster, seconded by Stalder, to review the possibility of adding a public comment period at the beginning of the agenda. In that work session, conversation was also had about changing the length of comment period from five minutes per comment to three minutes. All of that is reflected within the resolution as well as in the copy of the Code of Conduct that we included. With that, if you have any questions... So, actually, let me go a little deeper really quick. So, the changes... Sorry, I should have had that resolution before me. So, the changes that were... That's in the resolution before you puts a public comment period towards the beginning of the meeting with an aggregate time limit of 30 minutes with three minutes allowed per comment period. So, for each member of the public, it'd be three minutes. And then, that three minute was also carried throughout the document and added at the beginning of the meeting as well as at the end. Sometimes, we have a lot of public here with concerns regarding our agenda items, and we want to allow time for those to happen. So, the 30-minute interval at the beginning is to... From my understanding from our work session, is to allow those members of the public that have come just for the public comment period to not have to wait until the very end of the meeting to be able to make their public comment. And as... It also allows city council to be able to accomplish their agenda that's set before them for the night, to be able to continue business operations. And then, if we overflow from the 30 minutes at the beginning of the meeting, the public comment period would still remain at the end to take any extra comments at that time. So, with that, Mayor, I'd be happy to answer any questions as well as the city attorney.
Counselor Schuster.
The one thing you stated, as you kind of did, about the agenda, the public comment before the beginning of the meeting would be on non-agenda items. If they showed up for something on the agenda, they had to wait until it was introduced in the agenda unless it was a... What am I trying to say? Public comment on that item, holding a special time for just that item.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Counselor Doherty?
How do we limit people to three minutes? Do we have a timer perhaps?
Well, I have a timer. I will say this, we're going to ask them to stay within that three minutes. We're obviously going to give someone a chance to finish their thoughts, but... And then, the comment period at the end, there'll be... In my opinion, we're going to give them more flexibility, and there's no limit on the time at the end of the meeting. But we're not going to be, you know, beep, sit down. We're going to let them finish their thought. I am anyway, unless you tell me not to. Okay, anything else? Counselor Pierce.
So, I just want to point out that if we add 30 minutes of potential non-agenda item discussions early on in the meeting, we are on our second agenda item of a regular meeting, and it would actually be 8:45 if tonight we did that. So, I just want to say that this potentially adds a significant amount of time to our meetings, and we are only on Agenda Item Two. I would also like to say that this evening, of the 12 people... Well, actually, of the 13 people that spoke on agenda items, half exceeded the three-minute mark. Okay? Half have exceeded the three-minute mark. So, I think three minutes is unreasonable. I think adding public comment at the beginning is unreasonable, considering the pace that we need to move things through, and I apologize for that, but we are on Item Number Three, and it's 8:15.
I will...
Two.
We'll make...
Two, I went two. Wherever we are, it's 8:15, and we started at six.
Counselor Pierce, when we have a public hearing, there is no three-minute limit. You know, we will just... You know, when we do public comments, because council Code of Conduct says three minutes, we're going to stay within that structure. Counselor Weaver, did you have a...
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, everybody. How are you? In the 2013 to 2016 council discussions, this came up, and there was a lot of input from both sides of the issue, and I remember it really well. And I think the conclusion from one side of that discussion was, yes, we think it's important for the public to have an unlimited amount or as much input as we can give them. And so, we came up with a couple of strategies for that. We added public comment into the work sessions, which could be about anything, could be on non-agenda items. We added ward meetings, which can be about anything that people want to talk to us about with no time constraints whatsoever. We discussed extensively changing the time for the public comment at the meetings. Many of the senior members of council were opposed to that because they had been on council at a time when that was the case, and they said it was not functional, and it was disruptive of the meetings and the actual workflow of the meetings. I wasn't around at that time. I wasn't around at that time, but I do recall some of the longer-serving members of council raising that concern. And I'd suggest to you, there's another issue. People don't show up to the work sessions unless their item is being discussed at that work session. Many people, with the exception, I would say, of the residents of Ward One, since I once represented that ward and went to many of those ward meetings, don't show up to the ward meetings where they have an extended opportunity to talk to council members about whatever they want. There is an element of folks that really only think their public comment is worthwhile if they think they're going to be on the public access channel, which I think is amusing because I don't know how many people watch that. There's a few.
Two.
Two. So, I just... I think those things are all worth considering. I imagine you've probably talked about all those issues. I think we can give it a shot, but I think, Mr. Mayor, it creates a higher standard for whoever's chairing those meetings to watch the time, and not just the time, but the tone of those public comments. And when I say tone, I don't mean that people can't come in and tell us how dissatisfied they are or how poor of a job they think we're doing, any of us or any department in the city. That's not the issue, it's how that's done. So, I'll vote for this, but I'll be watching it very closely, and I'll be very interested to see how it goes, and this is the kind of thing that the council can revisit. And I agree with the other councilors' comments about time, and I also am curious where this came from, what generated this. So, those are my thoughts, Mr. Mayor. I'll vote for it reluctantly.
All right, thank you. City Clerk.
Mayor to Counselor Weaver, the resolution before you tonight came as a result of the work session that we held with public comment as one of the topics for discussion. So, these...
My question, Mr. Mayor, if I can, so I'm clear, is how did that get on as a work session topic?
It was requested by Counselor Schuster.
All right. And then, Counselor Schuster and I can maybe talk about who asked him about this later.
Okay. All right, let's stay with the Robert's Rules. Go ahead. Are you finished?
No, I'm finished, thank you.
All right, and then, also, I want to remind the audience to... If you have comments, keep it quiet in the audience because we're sometimes distracted by the dissatisfaction that you have as we go. Anything else from anyone... Vice Mayor Gabriel.
I think this is going to work well. When I was on the county commission, that was always the first order of business, public comment. We never had really any problem with it. And so, when Brian Counselor Schuster brought this up, I said I would support it because in my experience, it worked well. We didn't really have people that took advantage of it. It didn't extend the meeting that long. People didn't have to wait till the end of the meeting to speak on something that wasn't on the agenda, and I think that's part of our prerogative here as council members to listen to the public and not have them to... You know, I kind of... In essence, we're going to get to your items here pretty soon about annexation and so on, but they have to stay here through the whole meeting to listen. But if we have an item that isn't on the agenda, people don't have to wait so long, and I think that's advantageous for people to come to talk to us. So, I think it's going to work.
Any other questions, comments? Counselor Stalder.
Just a comment. Most of the time when people make a public comment, it's because they're dissatisfied with something or disgruntled about something, and I don't think people are any less disgruntled after listening to us talk about things that they don't care about for two and a half hours. So, I love the idea of moving it to the beginning of the meeting.
Thank you. Comment? Counselor Pierce.
So, I'm not going to support this, and it's not because I don't appreciate public comments, because I was part of that crew back in 13 and 16, or whenever that was, not that long ago, where we added public comments to the work session and where we added our fifth Tuesday meetings. So, I just want to get that out there. In fact, I ran on more when I first ran for council, you know, six-plus years ago, on the idea of hearing from the public. But given the fact that this is a regular meeting, we have to get business done, and we're on Agenda Item Number Two. I'm just going to say, no, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else on the council? Anything... Any thoughts from the audience? Yes, please come forward, and if you could give us your name, and this is on the council comments at the beginning of the meeting.
Yeah, okay, thank you. My name is Christopher Diley, and I'm homeless here, and I'm speaking in favor of this. I think it's a good idea. And I'll be very brief. I spoke in Bellingham, Washington, and just to give a recommendation, if you have like a clock, a digital clock that you can see, you can pull up their videos online so you can see it. They'll have three minutes, and you can see your time as you're speaking, and then a light will go off when your time is up. That was really helpful to keep it more orderly. And one other point is that the presently, like with Laramie, if you go online and you try to pull up the meeting, you don't get the video, all you get is the audio, and you can't bump the auto... You can't bump the audio up to like public comment to hear it at the end of the meeting. You have to hear it straight all the way through. So, I didn't even bother with it this past time that I spoke, like, three weeks ago. I just didn't bother with it. So, I think it would be helpful if you can bump it up and hear the audio throughout, you know, the entire meeting and not just, you know, have to listen to the whole thing. And also, up in Anchorage, Alaska where I'm from, they did it... Most places I've been in around the country, they all do it at the beginning of the meeting, and I don't think it's much of a problem. In Anchorage, Alaska, they do it at the end of the meeting. I spoke on the grizzly bear issue or bear spray for grizzly attacks. I'm one of the few people in the world that I know of that was face-to-face with a grizzly as a result of bear spray not working. So, my thing has been, when I speak at public... During public comment, my theme has been consistently, just by happenstance, it's been about public safety issues, and I'm a homeless person, but for some reason, that's been my... That's been my thing, and it's... Hopefully, it's been helpful. But with the... Specifically, with that grizzly bear issue or with the bear issue, the bear spray, the newspapers weren't publishing my letters, trying to warn the public that bear spray is not enough. And Bellingham, Washington, they would not publish my letters at all, and it was regarding the reintroduction of the grizzlies into the North Cascades. They censored me. They would not publish my letters, and I've got really good input on that issue and experience. So, I just wanted to say my last point was that, yeah, when I spoke in Anchorage, Alaska at the end of the meeting, 11:30 at night, I left the meeting after speaking, and there was no buses running. I had to walk six miles to get to my... I was staying with my brother at the time to walk to his house. I had to walk six miles home at night. So, when you've got poor people trying to participate in the democratic process, it does help us to have the opportunity at the beginning, but I do see both sides of it. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience? Okay, back to council, any other comments before we vote? Roll call.
Schuster.
Yes.
Pierce.
No.
O'Doherty.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
Stalder.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
That's eight yeses and one no, Your Honor.
Okay, so, from now on, we're going to have comments at the beginning of each city council meeting and at the end, also be public comments at the beginning and end of all work sessions. So, now, we move to the next item, which is item number 12? Oh, no, I'm sorry, 11A. Counselor Stalder.
Okay, I move to approve the FAA grant agreement number 3-56-0017-037-2019 for federal funding to rehabilitate and expand the terminal building at the Laramie Regional Airport and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by Counselor Schuster. Discussion by council. Council on this. It's a $2 million grant without any...
Match in. Jack, come up and talk.
Funds... And we'll get to the audience. Any questions or any concerns from anybody on the council? All right, let's go to the audience. If there's anyone in the audience that'd like to make comments on this. Mr. Skinner, looking forward to a beautiful terminal at the regional airport.
So are we. Mayor, members of the council, so what you have before you is a request to approve and sign the FAA grant for $2,036. One thing that you may notice about this grant, it's a 95% federal grant. In the past two grants that we received last year for the runway rehab was also 95%. Before that, it was 93. So, for some reason, the FAA has been giving Laramie 95%, which we'll accept. We've already received the match from state aeronautics at 3%. Our local match is 42,106, which we have on hand, so we're just asking for your approval. This morning, the county commission approved it. Since we're a joint powers board, it has to be approved by city council. County commissioners, the airport board, the airport board approved and signed the grant last Friday at a special meeting. Chairman Stamp is here if you have any questions regarding it, but this should get our funding up over $10 million for this project.
Thank you. Anything else in the audience? Did you have a question for... Okay, Mr. Skinner, we have a question from the council regarding this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Skinner, thanks for coming here tonight and work for the airport. I know that some of the grants that you guys pursue, you're able to pursue because of the level of taxpayer funding that's put into the airport. I know that that's one of the reasons that the city council, on behalf of taxpayers, has made sure over several years to frankly allocate as much funding as we can, and I know that that match comes in from the federal government after we hit a certain amount. Isn't that correct?
A certain amount of passengers. Is that what you're talking about?
No, I'm talking about, we get a direct match for the local funding that we allocate to the airport for support, do we not? Say, we used to do it out of community partner funding, and now we do it out of a specific...
Fee-for-services agreement, yes.
Yeah, fee-for-services agreement. Now, we receive a direct match for that?
It's used for match money.
It's used for match money.
It's used to match this federal... It's used to match federal and state aeronautics grants.
And does that only kick in after a certain amount, or is it any amount that the city would allocate that it's matched for?
It's any amount.
Okay, well, my point with that is, as you have pursued these grants for the airport, have you been successful, in your estimation, because the community can be demonstrated to have consistently, over several years, been invested in improving the airport?
Yes. Yes, I agree. The federal government, you know, they... Especially the FAA, they want the local communities to have, you know, a say in the project and to buy into the project. So, I mean, it's a small local match, but it's a big deal to the feds because they... You know, if we weren't able to get our local match, we'd be turning away $2,036, you know, just because we couldn't do the local match, and there's, you know, some smaller communities that have a tough time coming up with a local match. But in the past, we've been, you know, lucky and very supportive from both the city council and the county commissioners to come up with the local match for these projects.
All right, and I appreciate your answering that question because, you know, it's... It might be small, but for the city budget, it's not incredibly small.
Of course.
But I think you've seen and will continue to see a consistent level of support for that because we understand how important it is for our airport to continue to improve and expand for so many of the things that we're doing here. So, I just wanted to get a little bit of feedback from you about that.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. And the one thing that some of you may be aware of is that state aeronautics is funding an economic impact study for the next year. So, they're taking some surveys from passengers and some general aviation to see, you know, what kind of economic impact the airport has on the community. So, you know, we're going to share that report with you guys, and when it comes out, which will be a year, they want to, you know, go through the whole year and the different cycles that we in, you know, that we have, you know, between winter and summer and that kind of travel. But anyway, the last economic impact study that was done in 2013, the economic impact to the community just on the commercial service aspect, the airline service and the airline passengers, that generated more than $20 million of economic impact for the community. So...
Well, thank you, and I think it's vitally important, and I appreciate that, Mr. Mayor. I'm really glad this is happening for the airport.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Skinner. Anyone else in the public that would like to make any comments? All right, anything else from the council? Let's do roll call.
McKinney.
Yes.
O'Doherty.
Yes.
Stalder.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
That's nine yeses and zero no's, Your Honor.
Thank you. So, looking forward to the new addition at their remodeling of the terminal at the airport. Next item is item number 12. That's Counselor Harrington.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to award the bid for one new cabover dual-arm refuse truck with trade-in, Unit 677, to Peterbilt of Wyoming, Cheyenne, Wyoming, in the total amount of $333,749.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Mr. Webb. Oh, before we do, city clerk?
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I was just making sure that my notes say correctly. It says 334,749. I believe you said 333.
Ah, 334,749.
Thank you.
$749.
Okay.
Second agrees.
Thank you.
So, we have the correct number. Thank you for catching that. Mr. Webb.
Thanks. Honorable Mayor, City Council, this truck is for the solid waste division. This truck is the truck that comes through the residential neighborhoods, has the arms on both sides, picks up the poly carts that are placed out once a week. The truck was placed out for bid. Bids were open July 23rd. We received two bids, one from CMI TECO and one from Peterbilt of Cheyenne. The CMI TECO bid did not meet the minimum specifications, so we're recommending award to Peterbilt of Cheyenne.
Questions? Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Webb. Any comments, questions in the audience, from the public? Council, anything else on this? Let's go to the vote.
Harrington.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
O'Doherty.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Stalder.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
That's nine yeses and zero no's, Your Honor.
Okay, and next item is item number 13, Counselor Gabriel...
Thank you, Mayor. I would move to award the bid for one front-loading refuge truck with trade-in. This is Unit 667 to Peterbilt of Wyoming, Cheyenne, Wyoming, and the amount is 247,544.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, and I think we have to correct them out. Mr. Webb.
Honorable Mayor, City Council, so the difference with this trash truck is that it's a front-loading trash truck, so this is for the big commercial containers, picks them up at the front and dumps them. Bid on this was also open on July 23rd. We received two bids. We received three bids from two different companies. Peterbilt bid it with two different body manufacturers and also CMI TECO. We are recommending the award to Peterbilt with the libri body. Questions?
Any questions? Vice Mayor Gabriel.
Just curious, Brooks, how... What's the long-term usage of these trucks? How long will they be in service?
Unit 667 is pushing 10,000 hours right now and is just over 10 years old.
10 years.
And that's about normal, especially for the front loaders. The ones that pick up the poly carts are... We're around... We're between seven and eight years on those until they start really taking a lot of maintenance. But these front loaders, usually about 10 years.
Thank you. Any other questions? Anything from the audience regarding this heavy piece of equipment?
I'm here, I'm resident council. I just have a question in regards to the truck.
I'm sorry, we need to get your full name, Tim Stamp.
Tim Stamp, 1476 Wyman Court. Is it possible, using truck hours to... When you can design trucks to almost any standard that you want in today's world, you can go in and build them. Peterbilt does that. Is it possible for us to look at one truck that does front-loading and side-loading and saves money in that regard? I don't... I'm asking the...
Okay, I think we'll get you an answer real quick here from Brooks Webb. He probably knows. Okay, we've already got the expert here that it's not possible.
I'm sorry, since I deal with trucks and things like that, the design on that would probably be triple the value of the truck instead of just a percentage up to design that type of body.
Mr. Webb's going to say you're right, so go ahead.
Honorable Mayor, City Council, he's right. I've been in the solid waste industry for 35 years. I've never seen a truck that will efficiently do both, and I think he's absolutely right to design and build one of those would be an astronomical cost.
Thank you. Good thought, always looking for good ideas, so thank you, Mr. Stamp. Anything else in the audience? Any comments or question... Anything else in the council? Any comments in the council? Any comments from the council? Vote on this item.
Weaver.
Yes.
Stalder.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
O'Doherty.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
That's nine yeses and zero noes, Your Honor.
Okay, so that passes. The next two items, we're going to go back to the earlier discussion when we had, when we had the public, the, what was it called?
Public hearings.
Public hearings. And so, for those in the audience, we appreciate the unity that you have, coming together with your ideas. It's important now for you not to repeat what we've already heard. If you have new things you want to introduce to us, that's great. We want to hear everything we possibly can. But we're going to introduce the next two items, 14 and 15, and if you have something new, by all means, come forward and let's, let's hear about it. We're going to start with the introduction of this, the council, like we always do, then to you and back and forth. So, item number 14, if we could have Counselor Schuster introduce this to the council.
The title of this is Original Ordinance Number 2002, Approving and Authorizing the Annexation of Approximately Six Acres of Property Located in the Unincorporated Alpen County, Located at 4503 Bobolink Lane Into the Boundaries of the City of Laramie, Wyoming. I move to approve Original Ordinance Number 2002 on second reading, annexing approximately six acres of property located in unincorporated Alpen County, located at 4503 Bobolink Lane to the August 20, 2019 City Council Regular Agenda Meeting.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded by Vice Mayor Gabriel. If you could.
Yes. Thank you.
Just briefly reintroduce this to us. It's our second reading, so if, obviously, anything new or whatever, bring it forward to us.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'll do a quick briefing again. Like Counselor Schuster stated, this is 4503 Bobolink Lane. It is southeast of Walmart, just south of Premier Bone and Joint. Basically, this area is six acres on undeveloped road. It is considered a developed piece of land in our comprehensive plan, surrounded by urban growth area. The reason it is considered developed is based off the single-family home at the southwest corner. And so, that is why it is not part of the urban growth. Previously, this area was considered for development similar to the point. The residents showed up, similar to how they have tonight, and talked the council down from that. Currently, for the city in terms of revenue, I will summarize, but in summary, that this, sorry, this annexation may result in annual tax revenue to the city of approximately $68,000 per year, increased value of land, construction, constructed houses, built road infrastructure, sewer and water service, solid waste service and mosquito control, and depending on trash handling needs. In addition to the revenue generated, a total of $266,802 and 24 cents, and estimated permit fees will be collected, and $677,300 in infrastructure improvements to be invested in conjunction with the annexation. Now, the annexation does not dictate what is to be exactly built. That comes to the preliminary plat, but in conjunction with this application, there is a preliminary plat that states Bobolink Lane will be developed to the end of this property stopped at where the Fairview conjunction is, connection, sorry. And there will also be a second road called Orbler Lane to the north of Bobolink, where currently, and in temporary construction timeline, there will be a turnaround for any fire vehicle or emergency vehicle at that point. Just to address a public comment, sewer, water, gutter, sidewalks on the north side will be developed along with this preliminary plat or will be required. At the June 24, 2019 meeting, with a vote of yes for, no three, the planning commission recommended denial of this annexation, based on two different facts. The first is under the Laramie Municipal Code, overlay District 1508, 040, A1, B1, and 2, citing that there, with this development, there would be new contamination sources as well as new contamination pathways. The planning staff did not agree with this, stating that residential is allowed under the aquifer protection overlay zone. The only way to not introduce brand-new contaminants would be to have no development in this area, as well as within the Kappa, it identifies the city should annex as much property as possible. Also, once land is annexed into the city, all developments are connected to city sewer and water. In this particular instance, a connection to city sewer and water within the APO runs a much lower risk than the addition of septics and wells, if left within the county, and eliminates one existing septic and well, which is the one single residential at the southwest corner. The second finding was based off of 1508, 040, A3G definition of development. Staff is unsure why this was recommended, but the developer has gone through every process required by the city, an SSI done by Tri-Hydro as well as a peer review that the city set up. Public comments, you've heard them today, there are a lot of concerns around the upkeep of the road, increase in population, contamination to the aquifer, and just overall quality of life in the county. But with that, I am here to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from the council? Okay. Thank you for the introduction. Anything new, or anything that the audience, the public wants to bring forward as we consider annexation? We have new, new thoughts. We may get through this agenda. Okay, back to the council. Any comments regarding annexation? I, I have a question.
Yes.
I haven't been able to find it here. We obviously have some very concerned citizens that are coming before us with their, their thoughts. And we're talking about a 5.3 acre annexation. Would the residents that currently reside in the county be included in that, that are before us today, would they be included in that annexation where they would be required to add water and sewer to their homes?
Um, Mayor, Council, no, they would not be included in this annexation, and they would not have to bring up their homes to city standards along with this development.
All right. Any other questions or comments from anyone on the council? Counselor Doherty, did you have your hand?
No, no, just pointing at her, make sure you recognize her.
Counselor Doherty.
I'm trying to picture a pavement and gutter that's on the north side of the street, because I think that's what you said. So does that mean on the south side of the street, it would just be? Yeah.
Um, Mayor, Council, no. It would not gutter, I don't believe a side, what I said was, sorry, restating myself, sidewalk would be on the north side, a sidewalk would not be on the south side, but curb, gutter would be continued on the south side. And so, it would also include a, and I don't want to say something wrong, but the driveways would not be paved, but a buffer?
Curb relief.
An apron, sorry, would be, just to kind of kill out a bit of, blinking on all words today, but so dirt doesn't come into the road. Erosion.
Anyone else? Counselor Pierce?
So are we going dirt, pavement, dirt, or just pavement then dirt?
Um, if you're coming from Vista Drive, it will be, it's, it's currently a full, I believe arterial collector road, and then it goes pavement until Fairview to the east, and that's where it stops, and that's when the county takes control or the residents in this matter.
So it's pavement and dirt?
Yes.
Counselor Harrington?
Because it's in the county, thank you, Mayor, because it's in the county, the city really has no control over that remaining section between Fairview and Grant, correct?
Correct. And during this process, the county signed off on the application for this road to be taken over by the city if annexation is approved. And so.
That remaining section? Sorry, just to follow up a question. That dirt section past the, the veterinary clinic? Is that what you're talking about?
Uh, that, that continues to be county.
Okay.
And the county has no, that stays with the county, but from what we understand, the residents are in control of upkeep of that section of road past Fairview to the east.
I just wanted to make sure that was clear. Thank you, Mayor.
We heard from Dr. Sanders that he maintains roads in his neighborhood. Does the county have a schedule for maintaining any of the roads in this area?
No.
No.
Let's believe.
Shh.
Could, do you know the answer to that?
Mayor, Council, no. They, they do not, from, from what we've seen. And I can attest it as a rough road in spots, but no, the county has no schedule, from what we understand.
Interesting. All right. Any other questions?
I have one.
Okay, we're going to go back to the public here.
Just real quick.
Should you please, it's so we can have everything recorded on the tape.
Richard Warren, 4512 Bobolink Lane. So what does this do, I'm coming out on the great end of the stick, because I'm getting perfect roads, but what does this do to my neighbors? And what does this do when I need to get in and out of my house, when they're doing construction? I, I think the last time that you and I met eye-to-eye was about 20 years ago, when they improved 15th, if you remember, and I came forward on council, because they barricaded my road shut.
It's been a while.
And one, and one of the particular council members thought it was quite funny and amusing. I just want to know what we're going to do. Like I said earlier, you know, we all point our fingers at the big boys, but it's, well, you know, we're all okay here.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Anything else before we go to the vote on this? This is the second reading.
Oh, I was going to say.
Go ahead, you, go ahead and make your answer, and then we're going to have another public comment or question or whatever.
Uh, Mayor, Council, it is within our code now that during construction times, all residents have to have access to exit their property and get to where they're going.
Okay, thank you.
This is probably water under the fridge, but back to what I said originally.
Could you give us your name again?
Nick Spicer.
Thank you, Nick.
Sorry. I, I guess I don't understand how the county commissioners could have given the okay for a privately-owned road. It is not the county-owned road, it's a private-owned road in the county. So I don't know how they could give that stretch away, take it away from the landowners. I don't know. That's just my thought. Excuse me. And also, I, I'm sure you've probably looked into it, but maybe it's not feasible, but the access, why couldn't the access be off Vista rather than Bobolink, is another thought. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Now, back to the council. Anything further? Counselor Doherty?
I just have a comment that I, I think it's really unfair to the neighbors there who had covenants, and the neighbor across the street decides that the covenants don't matter. And, and that it's unrealistic to think that people are going to just stop when they get to Fairview and go the long way around to get to Grant. People are going to cut through on the private road. And I, so I, I think because these neighbors are not a part of our city, but they're being affected by this, that it's not really our right to impose this on them.
Thank you, Counselor Pierce.
So I'll go ahead and echo Counselor O'Doherty and just add to, as much as we need housing in this community, especially at the twin home where that medium to lower level, I just, I so hope we could find another solution so that we could win. We could have a housing development in Laramie someplace else, other than absolutely distracting and irritating and upsetting folks who don't even vote for us. So I just, I can't see us doing this as much as I know we need housing. I don't think we should interfere in this.
Counselor Weaver?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In the same vein, I think there are probably some alternative solutions that we can explore that are less controversial, and there are solutions that the folks that we've heard from a couple of times here in the council chambers, the developer, and our need for housing. I think we can probably meet the goals of those three competing interests with a different solution. This isn't it. I'm not going to vote for it. But I do want to put some work, time, and energy into exploring some alternatives. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Counselor McKinney?
Can anybody answer, is that a private road? Does it belong to the residents and the people, or does it belong to the county? Um, Mayor, Council, it is not a private road. It belongs to the county, but it is upkept by the private residents. And so, it's, I know it's unheard of, the city takes care of all city roads, and so if it was annexed into it, the city would take charge of the portion of that property. But as it stands right now, it is a county road. The county just does not upkeep it, so it falls back onto the residents.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, this is your meeting, so go ahead and come on up.
I'm sorry.
It's all right.
Nick Spicer. That really doesn't make sense. If it's a county road, the county would maintain it. Am I correct? Pat, you've been there.
I ask if you want to make comments.
But if you look at all the maps, it is a private road, and everybody from, until it turns into city, is responsible, maintains that, and again, has the liability, which is a big, big thing, the liability, if there were any wrecks or anything, on that road.
All right, thank you, Nick. In defense of the county, I will say this. We own the sidewalks, but we have the residents maintain clearing snow and such off the sidewalks. So it's, in a way, it's similar, but I personally believe that the county should take responsibility for, for county roads. That's my personal thoughts. We had one other person that wanted to make a comment from the audience, yes. And then we're probably going to go to the vote quickly on this.
Um, we lived out there 20 years, and Mockingbird is also a private road. And when we moved out there, we were told that they were private roads. We have not ever had a county truck come down our road. We had a state truck once. He was lost, he was plowing the snow, and when he realized he was digging up the road, he lifted his plow and he left. There has not ever been a county truck on any of those roads to maintain it at all. It's all up to all of us that live on that road to dig holes or.
It's all up to all of us that live on that road to dig holes or fill holes, potholes, whatever. We have a tractor, we've done ours several times, but I have school buses running by it. I called the school district and asked for them to put down gravel if they were going to be using it, and he said, uh-uh, it's a private road. So if it's a private road, it's a private road, the county has nothing to do with it. They don't acknowledge us in any way, we pay our taxes to them, but that's about all we get from them.
All right, thank you. Come up, we're kinda letting this go freely because it's an important issue.
Governor Garcia, 4531, welcome in here, thank you. We get a lot of promises from the engineer, from the one that's gonna be planning, but I'm a resident of Laramie, I've been here for eighty-seven years, and I've seen a lot of promises by contractors, so on, that they've screwed up everything. And we're not gonna, there's not gonna be that much of a privacy in that area. Besides that, I own an acre of land out there, I built, I was notified that I could only split it in half. Now why can't that also? Well, why can't they do the same thing?
I see.
Why should it all be a bunch of houses? Well, you ought to hold that. Well, you know what I'm-
I do, I do, thank you. The Leonard Lude music here.
I thought I turned it off.
All right, one more chance in the council, then we're gonna go to the vote, Counsel Stalder.
I was just wondering if it would be possible to hear from the developer to respond to any of the concerns about, you know, the paving or the condition of the road? And then also maybe just some input on what the impact would be on the aquifer with, you know, six septic systems or something like that? Because I absolutely agree with you guys, you don't vote for us, and I echo Counselor O'Doherty's concerns about, you know, we're making decisions that affect county residents, and I don't necessarily feel comfortable with that. But I'm also thinking about the aquifer and which would be more damaging to have six septic systems or to tap into city water, and I don't know if the developer could speak to that?
Honorable Mayor and City Council, I'm Colin Fosson, I'm the civil engineer helping the developer with the design through this project. And it's a well-known fact that typically bringing a property onto city water and sewer services is a reduced hazard to a vulnerable feature than having something like septic systems installed. As far as county roads go, I believe that the plat for the county development, as filed in the county courthouse, actually does dedicate those roads as county right-of-way, even though they are unmaintained county roads. The concerns about the traffic accessing the, through the dedicated right-of-ways is a valid one. However, people are generally fairly lazy and they will take the shortest path to their destination. That's just how traffic flow works. We are bringing up the Bobolink Lane to city standards for paved streets with curb gutter and sidewalk on the, adjacent to the development. Curb and gutter will obviously be throughout, however, the sidewalk would only be on the developed side. And that's typical of other locations that are being developed around Laramie. As a resident of West Laramie, that's usually one of the requirements that's put on the resident themselves if they would like to have that sidewalk installed as city streets are enhanced that are not adjacent to a development. Are there any other questions I can answer regarding that?
So Stalder, is that everything?
Thank you, thank you Mayor.
Thank you. All right, any other questions from council or comments? I'm gonna make one comment before we go to the vote. I am in great sympathy with the county residents. They certainly have a greater input in this than others. The one piece that concerns me is the aquifer. I want to do everything I can to protect the aquifer, it sounds like, you know, and we haven't talked about zoning yet, but the aquifer sounds like something that the comprehensive plan says whenever possible, acquire, you know, through annexation, property when it's offered, to protect the aquifer. That's my biggest concern. So on annexation, I think my vote, well, my vote is going to be yes. On the zoning, that's gonna be a different story. So anyway, I don't wanna be the one that says last, but anyone else before we vote, let's go to the vote.
Schuster.
Yes.
O'Doherty.
No.
Harrington.
Yes.
McKinney.
No.
Pierce.
No.
Stalder.
Yes.
Weaver.
No.
Gabriel.
Yes.
Somway.
Yes.
That's five yeses and four noes, Your Honor.
Okay, that passes, five-four vote. Now we'll go to item number fifteen, which is the last item on the agenda.
Oh, we have item sixteen?
No, sixteen is that votes eleven a. Okay. Would you, let's see, would have Counsel Schuster introduce item number fifteen?
Okay. The title is Original Ordinance Number Two Thousand Three, Amending the City of Laramie's Official Zoning Map to Zone the Newly Annexed parcel of land Located at Forty-Five Oh Three Bobolink Lane as R3 Multifamily District Within the City of Laramie. I move to approve Original Ordinance Number Two Thousand Three On First Reading Establishing an R3 Zoning District for Annexed Property Approximately Six Acres In Size Located at Forty-Five Oh Three Bobolink Lane In accordance with the findings of fact and conclusions of law. Should this be second reading?
Thank you.
It is misprinted on the computer.
Thank you, I missed that.
So I correct myself to say second reading.
Correct. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been second by Vice Mayor Gabriel.
Thank you Mayor Council. The land we were just talking about, the developer has applied to amend the zoning code to have this area zoned R3. It currently is zoned county residential, which is your typical county of one, one structure per acre. Around here, there is R3 to the west, there's B2 to the north, and then county to the south and east. This does go in pattern with the development to the west, just for that high density. We do find in the housing study, Activity Number Seventeen, Laramie does need a rise in housing units, five fifteen to five hundred and sixty in the coming years. Also, under Action Step Number Five, we needed diversity of housing in diverse areas as well. To the west, you do see single-family as well as twin homes, but it is a majority, single-family, large lots. And to bring this kind of density into an area, you do have that ability to have multiple levels of income, multiple options for people. And because we are seeing a rise in the area due to the new high school, the rec center, Walmart, just a number of amenities that are out here, we've found that it met those needs. And so, we believe that this higher density is something that could achieve those goals. Planning Commission also voted for yes, three no, to approve this recommendation. But this was met with a number of public concerns, resident concerns, one of which was density around a vulnerable feature. And, sorry, Chris Moody, a local geologist, did point out the recently cited in a former study of a fault zone that does go off, there is no defined limit of how far that does go off of a fault line, but it seemed to go in between one hundred and fifty and one hundred and seventy-five in each direction in that former study. We did find that there was one vulnerable feature that came into contact with a hundred-foot set off inside of this land, which was in the northeast corner, in that lot that is stated as future development. But with that, I am here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, questions in council? Okay. Questions or comments from the public?
Richard Warren. So, like I told you at the first council meeting, I'm a realist and I understand that eventually this whole area is gonna be sucked into the city. I don't have a problem with that. What I have a problem with is, like I stated, I've owned several businesses, my wife and I have. We've always done our due diligence and investigated. This was knocked down, I'm gonna say eight to nine years ago, we fought this. Don't you think that somebody trying to develop this land would at least come and talk to the neighbors and say, "How can we make this work?", like you said, Mr. Weaver? That's just common sense to me, but, you know, in today's world, we don't have that. And I think that a lot of us would be willing to accept some alterations in the platting and stuff, but the way it is here, I can't accept it. It's not right to us, like I said, you've annexed into the city now, second time, got one more reading. If it goes through, you've done something that we have no control over. That's just not right, you said something about democracy, where's democracy at in this case?
Any other comments?
I'm Kathy Buckhardt, and I've seen a hell of a lot of development out of there with a lot of single-family homes. But more to the south, we've got a whole bunch of duplexes going in. We've got a senior living center going in by the social security area there, across from the high school. There's a lot of business and a lot of things going in around there. And I don't think we need a huge bunch more in that area, that's all, thank you.
Thank you.
The engineer, one of the board members. The engineer said we need five hundred and twenty-six in the future. We don't need those today, and you have time to find a better area than where you're trying to put it.
Thank you, one. Welcome, give us your-
I'm the mayor and City Council. As a member of the Albany County Clean Water Advocates-
Name for the record, just so-
Sylvia Bagdonas.
Okay, thank you Sylvia.
Twenty-eight East Street. As a member of the Albany County Clean Water Advocates, I oppose R3 zoning for this area. I'm really concerned with everything I've heard from the neighbors and the density idea about bringing all these people in. It's a very vulnerable area, we're talking about the Casper Aquifer Protection Area. And I noted in the information that the depth to the groundwater is only one hundred and twenty-five feet. And that's not very much when you think that you have faults, fractures, and those other things that have been described in the paperwork. Also, there is only fifty-one feet of protective satanca shale overlay, which is less than the seventy-five feet recommended in the Casper Aquifer Protection Plan. And with the Sherman Fault Zone on the land area, building this very dense housing complex does just not make sense for protecting our water supply. And I just would like to support the concern expressed by all the people in the neighborhood, I don't think it's a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, Mr. Warren?
Richard Warren again. And this is gonna sound funny, but who's gonna be in charge of law enforcement and stuff? Because we have a serious problem right now with the people from the west side of Vista walking their dogs, at least I do, because I'm the first house there with a nice lawn, walking their dogs. And dogs do their things. So, and now we're talking, the city's gonna be right across the street, so are they allowed to come over and use my yard also? You know? I need some representation from somebody, if you're not gonna give it to me, I guess I'll find somewhere else.
All right. Anyone else in the public? Mr. Buckhardt.
Robert Buckhardt.
Welcome, bud.
Is R3 just about the greed? Or is it about, oh, we'll need to have places for lots of poor people to be? Bullshit. It's about greed. R1, okay, you got some residences. But the R3, that's just completely wrong. And it's just, right now, antelope habitat, and you're gonna turn it into high-rises full of lots and lots of people, and it's just gonna be overwhelming for that area and for the neighbors. So, however you decide, it's out of our hands.
Thank you, bud. Anyone else? Vice Mayor Gabriel, and then I think Counsel Harrington, did you have your hand?
Yeah.
So, but let's go Vice Mayor Gabriel and then Counsel Harrington. Did I catch everyone in the audience, in the public? Okay. Vice Mayor.
I would like to hear from the developer's engineer because of all the concerns that I've heard here tonight. The annexation issue was not, was a concern to me, but I voted for it. But now we're really getting into the, to the meat of things here with this zoning change. And I would like to know, from your perspective, rather than an R3, what would an R2, R1 mean in actual development numbers for that area?
Honorable Mayor, through you. Counsel Gabriel, the, the difference between R3 and R2 specifically changes the level of setback requirements through the planning department. So by altering the zoning from something like an R3 to an R2, it would shift the available space for building and the available floor plan that could be put on potential lots in that area. R1 lots have a much larger space requirement, whereas the R3 does allow that, that higher density. However, it, it changes the available permeable space on a lot. So you have pervious surface and impervious surface for a land, right? Impervious surface is counted as hard surfaces such as concrete, asphalt, specific types of landscaping, as well as all of your floor plan square footage. So by changing those, those zoning levels, you, you can actually increase the available pervious surface that could allow water into an aquifer. Also, it, like was mentioned, it changes the floor plans that you can put on such a, such a property. There are opportunities, I think, that if you guys are not accepting of the preliminary plat when we get to that item, that there are items that we can discuss with city staff and discuss with the city council regarding alterations to that preliminary plat. and discuss with the city council regarding alterations to that preliminary plat. But there, there are discussions that we need to have that are tied into what this is zoned as. Does that answer your question?
Well, I was just curious, too, after hearing all of the comments from the residents out there, if there's been any discussion on the developer's part that some of this might be restricted and you might consider less development out there from R-three to maybe an R-two, for instance.
Like I said, that, that would be something that we'd, we'd be happy to discuss during the preliminary plat, whether, whether we needed to restructure how those things are laid out for an R-two zoning versus an R-three zoning.
Thank you. Tim, thanks.
Anyone else? Counselor Harrington?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to move that we amend the zoning to R-two from R-three.
Second.
It's been moved in second by Counselor Stalder. So now, we're speaking only about R-two as an amendment. So let's start with the council. Discussion on the change, on the amendment for the change from R-three to R-two. Counselor Doherty?
It doesn't assuage my concern about if you have less permeable space, you have more, and if you still have the density. It doesn't sound like R-two reduces the density that much. So I'm still concerned about the density and how much stuff runs off from what drips out of people's cars. So, so it doesn't make me feel any better about the high density.
Counselor Schuster? Counselor Weaver, and then Counselor Schuster.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't support this amendment. I think the only benefit I can see out of this project, and, Mr. Mayor, let me just stop there and say that I don't need to impugn the motivations or desires on the part of the developers. Sometimes these discussions get into that. I mean, they're just trying to do things and operate businesses, and that's not where any of my comments come from. But the only positive I see out of this is an increase in the housing inventory. So to vote to annex it and then to vote to lessen the density basically robs any utility from this whatsoever, from my point of view. Why bother? And I think any development has a potential risk to the aquifer. Now, it might be plausible, might be distant, might be imminent. We don't really know. We received some interesting comments about regulation of things like herbicide restrictions and how we might handle some of this, and the fact is, as that public comment in the email pointed out, we have no way of maintaining, regulating that. Now, the mayor made an interesting point during the earlier discussion about some previous city policy dictating an annexation when possible. The fact is, we've done more research and gathered more data from the time that was put into place regarding aquifer and aquifer safety, and that weighs, that weighs on my mind. Something else that weighs on my mind is that we seem to be developing a consistent pattern in local government to say that we're willing to sacrifice our concerns about aquifer protection and safety over and over again for any variety of reasons and justifications at this end of the street or a block away. It's hypocritical. It's hypocritical. We need housing. Yeah, we do. We ought to find a way to work with this developer to find something else that will work to achieve their ends and our housing goals. Flailing around to find different ways to make something that shouldn't be on the table work in this current parcel of property, it's not a good policy direction. I won't be voting for the amendment. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Schuster?
Thank you. I, I wish that somebody else had grabbed up the property and said, "I'm going to do this with it," but they didn't. They went to a person that has invested money into it and wants to do building of houses. So we have to deal with it. And one of the biggest things I find out on this here is it says, right in the last sentence in this, "Finding facts and conclusions of law." So on this, we have to now make a statement on why you won't vote for it by showing a legal reason you won't vote for it. Am I correct on that, Mr. Attorney? I'm going to throw him under the bus.
It's where I live, Counselor. This is a slightly different situation because this comes to you, as I understand, as a package deal. This is not city property that we are denying one thing or another about. It, it, it would have to be annexed, and then all this stuff happens together. As I understand it, if you try to annex the property, the developer or any owner doesn't want, doesn't like the rest of the package, there will be no annexing. So, no. In this particular situation tonight, no, you don't have to have, you know, the, the normal findings of fact and conclusions of law, because I think what will happen in reality is that the whole thing goes away and it will be developed in the county.
So there's a possibility, they said that they could have an acre and divide it once, so with there being five-point-three acres, possibility of ten more residents with ten more septics and ten more wells into the, to the ground. And I think that that probably, the worst-case scenario is septics anyway. And, thank you.
Anything on this side? Counselor Harrington?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I just want to say that the, the reason for this amendment, in my mind, and, and hearing your, your comments, Counselor Weaver, the reason for this amendment is specifically to prevent the large apartment building on top of the vulnerable feature. That is not a permitted use in the fault zone, as we all know. So, single-family homes are, are allowed in R-two zoning. That would allow up to a fourplex, just not on that immediate section of the fault zone. So, my intention is not to prevent affordable housing from occurring on this property. My, my intention is to, to sort of lessen the impact to the neighbors while still allowing the developer to move forward with the general essence of the, the proposed project so that we do not end up in a situation where this is developed in the county with ten septic systems, which, if you haven't had a chance, public, to read the septic system study that the county commission just commissioned, and I think the results came out in May, at the end of May, please do that. I mean, septic systems are, are not a viable second option on the aquifer. So, that is the purpose of my amendment, so I just wanted to, to clarify for the rest of council, my intention. Thank you.
Counselor Doherty?
I believe they have to have enhanced septic in the county now, in that zone.
Okay.
So it wouldn't be the same as the study that was just done.
I take it. Thank you.
That attorney's shaking his head no.
Not enhanced.
Okay, we're going to go to staff.
Sorry, Mayor, council, they do not need that upgraded septic. It can be same-old, same-old that has been happening for years now.
Any other thoughts on the change from R-three to R-two? Have we gone to the public on this? It's been a long night. Okay. All right. I guess I would want to ask this question. R-two still permits fourplexes, duplexes, but not apartment housing, correct?
Mayor, council, you are correct. Fourplex is the most dense they can do on that parcel to the northeast. They would be able to do multiple ones. I'm not sure, just not knowing the dimensions right now, how many that would be, but they could do multiple buildings.
And because there's greater setbacks, that would probably reduce the footprint of the number of units that could be placed in this five-point-three-acre plot, correct?
Correct. I'm, again, I know the front setback's much different in a R-two compared to an R-three. I'm not sure how it affects the side yards.
Counselor Harrington?
I have a question for you. Curious if, does the fourplex qualify as a single-family home under, I'm assuming it does not, but I just want to be sure.
Mayor, council, it does not.
And that's obviously a conversation for the plat, but I just was, was curious.
Cool.
Thank you.
Mr. Weaver?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to invite the developer to talk about the impact of this amendment on their plans, if it should pass. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, through you. It, it's still the intent of the developer that i-if the council approved an R-two zoning, we, we would still proceed with trying to develop this into the duplex-style lots. It, it does alter what could potentially be done in that northeast portion. However, the reason that was left unplatted is because, due to the timing of, of funding and how, how things progress, the needs for housing at the time that that gets final-platted, which has to go, again, go through three readings, the, the timing of when that happens may affect what is required for housing in the city. It, it, it's possible that, at the time that that, that portion gets final-platted, we don't need an apartment complex. We only need something like additional, like five additional duplexes in that area instead of a, an apartment-style complex in that segment. And again, that, that just changes the available space for floor plans that can go on those lots. Does that answer your question?
Ah, yes, it does. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Counselor Doherty?
I have a question. What is the zoning if we just annex it? Is it R-one? I'm not saying that the developer's going to accept that, but what is the default? Because we're asking to change.
Yes, right. Mr. Teeny?
Mayor and council, there's no default zoning. You must pick a zone that matches with the comprehensive plan that was approved by the planning commission, which is R-two, R-three, R-two-M. Those are your choices. If you choose to do any other zoning, all of that will start back over with the planning commission. They would have, you would have to remand comprehensive plan amendments back to the planning commission for reconsideration, and any other zoning districts would need to then fall in line. There is no default zoning district at all.
Thank you, Mr. Teeny. All right. Further questions, comments? Counselor Doherty?
So my understanding is we can't be a good neighbor now if we, this is part of the city, and go with the original covenants? That's not even an option in your view? That's my question.
Mayor and council, first off, I'd say that we have no records of original covenants saying certain things, and until I've seen those, I would, I would be reluctant to make decisions based upon those assumptions. Number two, you can, and there's a process to do that, which would be on your next meeting, remanding the comprehensive plan amendment back to the planning commission for reconsideration. That would allow for the planning commission to consider other comprehensive plan designations, which could then allow you to consider R-one zoning. But remember, the planning commission does make that decision, and so they may choose to bring back the same recommendation to you, which would include your only options of maybe R-two, R-three, or they could change it to allow you to select R-one zoning. Under the information that you have available, we'll note as staff that the R-two and R-three zoning and the preliminary plat that's before you would allow you to proceed forward under the information that you have presented. If it was to change to R-one zoning, the, the plat in which being, which has been presented to you would have to be completely reconsidered and, and start back over at the planning commission stage, but actually all the way at the staff stage of full redevelopment of the site based upon the required zoning requirements, sizing of infrastructure and things like that, all related to single-family homes. So, just, there, there is a process to do that, and that's kind of how you would do, it would be key at your next meeting, and that would start with that first item that is on your, would be on your agenda, which is the comprehensive plan amendment.
Counselor Pierce?
So, a lot of the residents talked about flooding, and I'm wondering if there has been a consideration regarding runoff or flooding, or do we have to put in a pond somewhere in these five-point-three acres? Or a holding pond? What are they called? Detention, yeah, that's it.
Go ahead.
Mayor, council, if you look at the lot that is number three on the preliminary plat, that is the detention pond, and they will have all stormwater running through it into, draining into Vista Drive and going towards Grand. And so...
Into Vista, towards?
Towards, that is just the, the closest entrance into our stormwater system.
All right. Anything else?
On the amendment, right.
On the amendment. This is changing from R-three to R-two. All right, let's have a roll call on the amendment.
Harrington?
Yes.
McKinney?
No.
O'Doherty?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Schuster?
No.
Stalder?
Yes.
Weaver?
No.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Shumway? That's six yeses, three, and three noes, Your Honor.
So we're back to the main motion as amended from R-three to R-two. So now the new consideration is to have the zoning as R-two. Further discussion from the council. Counselor Weaver?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's a question probably for Mr. Teeny, or, I'm sorry, Erica, I forget your last name. Either one of you can probably tackle it, but I'm wondering, because I don't want to look it up right in front of me, in the comprehensive plan, what is, what is identified as the future use for this area? Residential zoned as?
Mayor, council, it is currently, the future land use is estate, which under it would be R-one, LR. I think those are the only two zones under that future land use. So...
All right, I appreciate that. So, Mr. Mayor, on the main motion now, after the passage of the amendment, I wonder if council members can recall discussions in the past, I know some of you certainly can't, but I bet we all can, about spot zoning, or another way to look at it is contract zoning, which is basically that individual project proposals drive our long-range policy process, which, you know, depending on who you ask, isn't always the best way to approach it. This seems like an example of that, where we're working with the developer, who, again, they're, they're doing what they do, it's not to impugn them, and then we are trying to find ways to mold policy to fit events as they unfold instead of the other way around. It seems to be something that isn't going to go away, but I think it bears mention and consideration as we move through the rest of our decision with this process. Second point, just a reiteration of a point I made earlier, it seems like despite new information from qualified people, despite continuing to investigate the issue of the aquifer and the long-range implications of development for it in and around vulnerable features, we can't prioritize it. We can't prioritize it. We seem to be unable to move that to the top of a list of considerations. We seem to be unable to move that to the top of a list of considerations. We're under a lot of pressure with a lot of other considerations, I understand that. And like a lot of things, unless it's an immediate alarm in our face, it seems like it's reasonable to not place it at the top of our priority list. But that's the problem with these types of things, is you won't have to do that until you're forced to if you follow a certain path, and that seems to be the path that land use decisions in our local governments are choosing to follow. I hope we don't have to pay a price for that. And I really hate being put in a position to have to make a decision between an expansion of housing, which I believe we do need, and long-term resource protection. That's a jam. But between the two, there's one that I'm going to prioritize. And I also, in closing, Mr. Mayor, I think we need to move away from the sort of contract zoning perspective that we take with these things, where the developments drive the process to how we change our land use, instead of saying, these are the identified issues. Now, I understand that in our comp plan, some of these potential uses that we're discussing have been outlined. Again, though, a lot of those policy positions were debated and voted on and informed by information that's now out of date. Thank you.
Well, here's my position on this. I, should we decide not to, should we decide to not make this R2, then the annexation goes away, the zoning from the city goes away, and it goes to the county, and we have six, five new septic systems, which...
That's a billion cans.
Yeah, up to, up, five, six, seven, eight, nine septic systems. I am so sensitive to the Casper aquifer that I cannot let this go to a point where we're having septic systems go into this area, which abuts the city. And so I'm, it's a difficult one for me, because I really believe that the, those that reside in the county have the right to, you know, have great input into their, you know, into the development in this area. I'm going to vote for this change to R2. And obviously, we still have another reading, we still have the preliminary plat, we're going to have the final plat, all of these things that come together. I wish it was a simple solution, that it could just, you know, remain in the county and not be developed, but I don't think that's a possibility. I think it's going to be developed, whether it's by the city in the future date or by the county, and I just want to make sure we do everything possible, in my mind, to protect the aquifer. So anyway, that's my thoughts. Anything else from anybody? Okay, we're going to go, we're going to just take a couple more comments from the public, and then if, then we're going to cut to the vote. So, Juan, did you want to go first, and then we...
I have two questions. One is if you annexed it into the city, if I brought you my covenants, where my acre could divide it in two, could you have it zoned so that it would have half-acre lots and still be under city control?
Also, we had another...
I think Nick wanted to talk.
Yeah, Nick, I think Nick, you also raised your hand. Go ahead, Mr. Warran, and then we'll go to Nick.
I've got the covenants right here for all of us.
Let me ask you this, because you have those in front of you. Are those, are those covenants that affect directly this 5.3 acre parcel?
I don't know. I know that this is our, this is where all of our land is platted.
Okay, so this is covenants to your properties specifically?
No, this is to all of ours.
Everything in this area?
Yes.
Okay.
Original date, 12/10/54.
Okay.
It was amended once in 1977. It states in here, "No residential structure shall be erected or placed on a building plot which plot has an area of less than 20,000 square feet." Last time I checked, an acre has 43, 560 square feet in it. So, and I agree, you're probably, you know, you're opening yourself up to 11.5, 11.3 septic systems. Do you really think the county's going to allow that? I thought we were working on the aquifer together. Where's the cohesiveness? Aren't we all one city? Aren't we all one people? I don't see any cohesiveness here between the county and the city. It's all about the dollar.
Yes, exactly what he just said. And also, what a great place if you're worried about the aquifer for a park. There are no parks around there. Just a thought.
Amen. Amen.
All right.
I know this is going to take a little bit, but I don't understand the difference between R1, R2, and R3. Is it like, R3, they can have 32 different properties on it, and R2, they can only have 30 different properties on it? I just would like a little clarification, because I don't know. Thank you.
There's a great big spreadsheet that goes through all the differences. Basically, R1 is single-family, R2 is, you know, fourplexes and less, R3 can be, you know, the multifamily. But that's too simple. I wish...
Fourplexes max.
Max, yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Go ahead, one more.
Sorry.
This is your meeting.
You guys are talking about the aquifer and our septic systems. We drink and we have, we use the septic system. They're very important to us out there, too. If ours are leaking, they're fixed. If there are water, it's there. It's not necessarily going to be, if you put five houses out there on that five acres, that's only going to be five septic tanks, if that. Some people might buy the whole five acres and put one septic tank. We all drink and have septic tanks out there, just like you. We're very cautious with what we have out there. It's not like we're just dumping it off. So, you have to consider that we are taking care of it. It's not just let it go. We live there, we take care of it.
There was reference earlier to the Mace study of the septic systems and the, you know, the impact that it has on the Casper aquifer. That's what I was referring to, as well as I think Counsel Harrington, you know, obviously, you know, well, anyway, you have a point. You want, you have, obviously, your water is better than our water, because we...
It actually is.
You don't have fluoride, you don't have chlorine.
No, we don't have fluoride, we don't have chlorine. But it's better, come out, Catherine.
Get the best water in the world at your neighborhood. Okay, let's go to the vote.
Harrington.
Yes.
McKinney.
No.
O'Doherty.
No.
Pierce.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Stalder.
Yes.
Weaver.
No.
Gabriel.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
That's six yeses and three nos, Your Honor.
So that passes, and that concludes our regular agenda. At this time, we have a chance again for public comments. If there's anyone that would like to come forward and make public comments on non-agenda items, you're welcome to come forward.
Yeah, just to be clear, this is 17, public comments?
Pardon?
This is 17, public comments, non-agenda, okay.
Yes, non-agenda items, right.
Okay, thanks, I just want to be clear. I'll go by Chris, again, to be anonymous, to refer to my involvement in Alcoholics Anonymous, and just, I know it's been a long meeting, so I'll be brief. I wanted to reiterate, and helping to describe, that when I got sober in Alcoholics Anonymous in 1985, and I was honest about the gay issue, about being gay or bisexual, and then I was troubled over it, the dynamics involved were that what Anchorage, Alaska has, is a place called the Anchorage Baptist Temple, Jerry Prevo, the Anchorage Baptist Temple, and they're organized against gay people. They're very anti-gay, and they're against the gay movement. So, because of that, they're, they have their people within the meetings, within Alcoholics Anonymous meetings, that were controlling and manipulating the process. And what that involved for me personally was being an object of ridicule, being made an object of ridicule, and being ostracized within Alcoholics Anonymous. And I just, I can't describe the harm that that did to me. But, like I said, I'm going to keep it brief and just keep it at that. But one point I'd like to just add to that is that here in Laramie, there are no gay meetings. There are no, they're called special interest gay meetings. They don't have them here. So if a person wants to be honest about the gay issue, which AA emphasizes rigorous honesty, if they want to be open and honest, they're going to have trouble. There's going to be trouble here, and there's going to be discrimination. I've already experienced it. So the ordinance that was passed in 2015, try to apply it, it's really difficult, but I'm glad that the city of Laramie passed that ordinance, and that's why I came back here, because I like the city of Laramie, I like the wildlife here, I like the scenery, there's a lot of things I like about it. I just want to thank the people here that have helped me, you know, as I've been homeless here, they've done things very helpful to me. But I want to, and very quickly, I want to address the bad jacketing. I think it's Ward Churchill that refers to it as bad jacketing. It's tied into like, coin tail pro, you know, like FBI stuff, which is kind of, kind of heady, you know, to apply to myself, because I'm not like a big-time activist of any sort. But bad jacketing, where you target an individual for smearing them, and you spread bad information about them so that they're ostracized everywhere that they go. I've been homeless 18 years, I've been clean and sober 34 years, and I'm not a lazy person. Okay, so there's organized harassment against me, and I, and I believe that's bad jacketing. That's happening here. The latest, and I won't go into the details, but the latest has involved the Salvation Army and the soup kitchen. But there is organized harassment against me here, and it's been preventing me from getting out of being homeless here in Laramie, which is very profoundly disappointing and distressing to me, because I don't know if I'm ever going to get out of being homeless. But I tried, I tried to get out of it here. So I just wanted to thank people, and just one last point I wanted to point out, is I found this online today, is the New York intelligence, or an article from September 4th, 2015, this is a quote, quote, "A fundamental, a fundamental principle of online shaming is that the process robs people of the context that makes them human beings," end quote. So I think when people are doing, and I think, and I don't have time to go into it, but I think, well, it does involve online shaming, you know, the bad jacketing. And I think what people don't understand, they don't understand the human aspect, the things that they're using against me to incite hatred against me. People don't know the human aspect of what I'm experiencing as a human being. They don't know about the lesions on my brain and spinal cord from Lyme disease, and how that might be affecting my behavior. They don't know that. And I don't have the opportunity to tell people, hey, wait a minute, this could be physiologic, you know, physiological, that's affecting my behavior, you know, so if I might be like, you know, like a weirdo to you, you know, weird in certain aspects, think about it, you know, lesions on your brain and spinal cord. And the last point is that I found on CNN, is that one of the latest things with Lyme disease is that they're looking into it as, you know, congressional hearings looking into it to see if it's been biological weaponry, used as biological weaponry. So there's things about Lyme disease that bacterial spirochete, Borreia burgdorferi, could be affecting my brain and spinal cord in ways that even congressmen don't even know about. You know, only biological scientists might know, so I certainly don't know. So I might be like a really strange individual for what's going on with my brain, so if people could keep that in mind. But anyhow, thank you for letting me speak here, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Chris. Is there anyone else who would like to make comments during this public comment period? Okay, seeing on Counsel Pierce.
So, are we skipping 18?
Oh, no, we need to do that. Consideration, future council work session topics.
So, Mayor, if we could have a motion to extend the meeting to 10 o'clock, then we can address some new items, but...
Does anybody have anything that important?
Well, that's right, because we have to vote to extend the meeting. We have to do public comment.
The meeting till 10 o'clock.
Motion to extend, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, second, let's have a vote on that.
You want me to do roll call?
Yeah, let's do roll call.
Okay.
All right, we have to have two-thirds, right?
Correct.
All right, so let's get a count.
And don't we have an extremely sensitive executive session?
Yes, we're going to go right, that's what you're going to be doing.
Can we extend beyond 10?
We can for that.
We are just extending to talk, to all say we have no work session topics, correct? Like, we're just going to blow right on through, and I would assume, I mean, maybe somebody has a lot to say.
I have one.
Let's go ahead and vote.
All right, maybe I spoke too soon.
Harrington.
Yes.
McKinney.
No.
To extend the meeting.
O'Doherty.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Stalder.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
That's eight yeses and one no, Your Honor.
Okay, Counsel Pierce.
So, can we do 18?
Yes.
Yeah, so, so I'd like to have further discussions related to the code of conduct so we can address the document as a whole document, as opposed to just little sections of the document.
Put that back on the items for future work sessions. Anything else?
Do we have a second on that?
Well, I think we do. Is there a second to do the code of conduct, somebody?
To put it as a work session item?
Yes, I think we have to.
It does require a second.
Okay, so now it's, now it's official, you've got Counsel Doherty and Counsel Pierce. Anything else on work sessions?
Okay.
Counsel Pierce, would you do number 19?
Okay. I move that we adjourn to executive session regarding land negotiations, Wyoming statute 16-4-405, lowercase a, Roman numeral three.
Second.
Okay, all in favor of adjourning to executive session indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, that's majority, going into executive session. So let's be downstairs, by 10 o'clock, we'll be out, we were told, within 15 minutes. Four minutes.
Can I leave at 10:15?
Yes.